Calling this meeting to order, we'll call President DeSantis.
President DeSantis.
President.
Member Simon.
President.
Member Duane.
Here.
If we could please all stand for the President of the House.
The President is to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with every justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda this morning? Can I get a motion for people? First and second? I'll second. Any objections to that? So that's one, two, and three. So opportunity for members of the public to provide public comments in the board at this time? Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board? Alright, we're gonna keep moving. So we're now into, I have a question back in time. And our first topic this morning is the USP Fund.
President DeSantis. Mr. Gooding.
Oh, great. Oh, good. Good morning. Sure, I'll give them a run. So essentially, this topic has been one that's been dropped about probably in the last two years maybe? Or a year and a half at least. And so part of it was because at a previous spring retreat, I believe, there was some confusion about our identity from a problematic standpoint. And so I think that's where this conversation initiated. And so the purpose of this morning's retreat and this topic specifically is to look at, reevaluate, consider, just review where we are now and how can we identify ourselves potentially? And what I did ask was for some of our key partners groups in the community to participate and also provide a perspective from their lens because it's important that the board, the district, consider or not work or operate in a vacuum or in silos. So it's really important to have as many perspectives part of this conversation as possible. And so with that, in addition, we have a strong partner with the Emory Ed Fund and asked Philip Powell to be here as well because it's important that we have some clear alignment between the efforts that they make for our district and same way that it be two-way communication. So with that, we have John Gooding here this morning who is a true partner to this district and also is a very active fund minister for the Emory Ed Fund. And so I was hoping if he could share maybe ten, fifteen minutes and maybe if there's any questions from the board, some perspective from his end just to get him going. And then if Philip has things to add there too, and the Anacarita and team and staff will lead us in through the district's staff's perspective. Please, Mr. Gooding.
Oh, welcome. Well, thank you, Melody. You know, first of all, I just want to say, as a thirty-plus-year resident of this community, that what this board does is remarkable and this community owes all of you a tremendous debt of gratitude. This is in no ways a thankless responsibility that you undertake and it is not understood nor appreciated by a lot of people. But some of us really do appreciate the time and effort that you put in. It is critical to having a sense of community and a successful community that we have a vibrant, thriving schools. And so first of all, let me just say thank you. I admire and am grateful all the time to the efforts that you make. Let me say that frequently, the business community is also not understood or appreciated in terms of their concerns and efforts because what their primary goal is is to make money. And but over the years, we have enjoyed really significant support from the business community. And yesterday, I was privileged to have lunch on about this very subject. It was with Andreas Kluber, who is the head of the local building trades in Alameda County, Rich Robbins, who is the owner of Waram Development, and with Dan Bogan. All of you know who Dan Bogan is, but he is a remarkable man who at one point in his career was head of the NCAA athletic programs. He was city manager in Berkeley. He was vice chancellor of business affairs at UC Berkeley. He serves on the board of several national and international corporations. His commitment is really to try to support and process support for young black men. He was the first chief of staff to Ron Dellums when Ron was mayor of Oakland. Because we're, you won't tell anybody, but what happened is that he was only chief of staff to Ron Dellums for three months when he said, hey, I agreed to be Ron Dellums' chief of staff, not Cynthia Dellums' chief of staff. So he left. He is still very involved in efforts to find and support things. But the result of this luncheon yesterday, I think, is going to be pretty interesting. Rich has long been a significant financial supporter, just he and his company. He's one of the few people I know who actually walks the walk as well as talks the talk. And in the cities of Richmond, Berkeley, and Emeryville, he is the largest, he and his company are the largest supporters of nonprofits in those communities. And he's, he said it's also self-interest. He owns, unlike a lot of developers, he doesn't develop something to sell it for profit. He keeps owning it and operating it. And he has over four million square feet of lab space in those three cities. There's nobody else that even has a hundred thousand square feet. So he is a significant, but what we have learned is that a lot of these technology companies are having a real problem finding educated workforce. Not the PhDs, not the people at the top doing research. What they can't find are young men and women to work in as lab technicians, as lab clerks, and so on. They can find them who want to work, but they've learned that wherever they went to high school and got their high school diploma, whether it was in Albany or Emeryville, Oakland, Berkeley, Richmond, they have a very difficult time adding up a column of figures accurately. And they cannot read a form and comprehend it in order to fill it out and complete it. So a lot of these companies have now said, we've got to do something. So it started with Bayer Pharmaceuticals. And they provided the initial funding and have been joined in significant ways by Bactel Engineering and by Waram in setting up a program at Cal State East Bay under Stephanie Couch to provide expanded STEM education to teachers throughout the district, the schools in the East Bay. And they are, they find all kinds of challenges in that because like you folks, you know, it is, there are lots of needs in the school districts. You know, I picked up the paper this morning and read that the San Francisco School District has started a new program of feeding brunch at recess. You know, I don't know, look at me, it's, I can't function without eating a lot. And it's unrealistic to us to think that we've got children coming to school who are hungry, that they're going to be able to focus on learning. So we've got lots of problems and lots of challenges. But STEM, my concern is that STEM becomes the latest fad because we have them periodically in education. But if we look at where we are here in Emeryville, we have a lot of technology companies and they're really screaming. So what we've got to do is help Philip take advantage of their concerns so we can demonstrate to them that the Emory Ed Fund and the Emory School District is a place that they can put some of their resources and some of their concerns that we can hopefully get some good outcomes. So this lunch yesterday was about putting together with the trades support because they're having a hard time finding workers who can function in today's world. They're not looking for people with master's degrees or doctor's degrees, but they kind of have people who can read a form, add up a column of numbers. I mean, it's not just with a shovel or a pitchfork anymore. The trades are highly technical and they provide really good employment, but they can't find people who can participate in that. We have another element of the population that we want to assist in this kind of thing and which is the reentry programs. So we have, Miguel, I think you're aware of Mandela down here. So we're, our next meeting, the four of us, is there because Rich and Dan have not toured that place. But what we are agreeing to do is, Stephanie now has a pretty good program that is going to be in Emeryville. And what we're looking for is, Rich just gets, what I love about him is he's impatient. He wants to have it now. And of course, that's difficult because there are a lot of legitimate things that need to have taken place first. But what we've got here is that in Berkeley to do, and we think that Emeryville may be able to dovetail with that, we can start this summer with some programs and then carry on into the coming school year, some intern situations, some training that is about real jobs. And we're going to have the support of building trades both to provide instructors and mentors and so, and we're going to have the business community providing the funding. So this is a win-win-win in getting these various elements to work together. One advantage I've learned about a crisis is that it helps bring people together who are not necessarily used to cooperating with each other. So we're going to try to do that. I just wanted, I was grateful to Melody to have an opportunity to talk about a couple of things and make sure that you were aware. There's all kinds of misinformation that happens. And I, some of you know that I purposely don't read certain blogs because they're nothing but misinformation. And besides, it sends my blood pressure up. But there was a recent one that was just outrageous because it purposely misrepresented the facts about the business community's support of the Emory Ed Fund and our schools, but most importantly, our children. For instance, the statement was that Pixar has contributed nothing. And what happens is, the Emory Ed Fund goes by, our fiscal year is the school fiscal year. So we go July one to June 30. In 2012, in May, at the end of that year, Pixar donated eighty thousand dollars to the Emory Ed. But that doesn't show up on the report from July one, right? And the following year, they donated, but it was in the end of the year. So there was a calendar, actually twelve months, when there was no contribution. So the 990 form for that year doesn't show anything, but there are significant contributions just before that calendar year started and just afterward. Those kind of things are, don't help anybody, that kind of misinformation. And so probably I appreciate saying we're working hard and we are, but we have only, I was a part of the group that founded the Emory Ed Fund in 1995. The whole purpose was to support the school district. That is the only purpose we have. We don't have an independent agenda. We don't have our own programs or ideas. We're not political, we're not doing anything else. What we're looking for, and when we were at our most effective, was when the superintendent happened to be Tony Smith. He found a way to leverage that and make use of it. So he would come to our meetings and say, here's what I need. So we just got our marching orders and we went out and did that, right? He wanted each principal to have a certain amount of money each school year to be able to spend any way they wanted. And I will tell you that in a couple of cases, what it was spent on was buying clothes to kids who had none. It was providing support to students on a number of ways. And instead of having to go through a process, the principal just couldn't, he just had to call the office and say, I need three hundred dollars. And that's what happened. The superintendent had a little fund, it wasn't significant, but it was something that he could do, take care of, things that needed to be done. And of course, we, working with the superintendent during that time, were able to bring significant foundation money to the district. When we first started the Emory Ed Fund in 1995, we were ecstatic when we reached twenty-five thousand dollars. Times have changed. Now, we were looking for significantly more than that. But one of the things, like you, we're looking forward, to you, to help provide real leadership, a superintendent who can understand and make use of this. That's the only purpose we have. We don't have any other role or purpose. So I just wanted to clear the air and then, we're going to be looking to, is to, one of the candid, one of the problems we've had in the past is getting information back from the district to our executive director, certainly Philip, but before Philip. And we need to do that in order to get more donations, right? So it's not complicated stuff. What Rich Robbins wants to know is, how many students are there? How many students are participating in an after-school program or a summer program? How many teachers are involved? Have we seen any progress? Has, what are the results been? That's all he wants to know so we can go back to him and say, we need more. We're fortunate that we have, and he is willing to reach out to the tenants in his buildings who are some of the larger, most important technology firms in town. So it's not that he's wanting to control anything. What he's trying to do is help us all be more successful. He has this, has a saying that I run around in my head every so often. He says, you know, John, it's not about the money. It's about the money. And so we understand the responsibility and challenges that you school board members have and we want to be supportive in every way we can. So, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very helpful. Any questions, thoughts on that? Thank you for introducing the evening.
So John, what I'm hearing you say is that, you know, first of all, the district, you know, we need to kind of recommune the relationship that we had in the past. I mean, first of all, we need to have, what I'm hearing you say, you know, in this new hire of a superintendent, a superintendent understands the relationship and the purpose of the Emory Ed Fund, which I can agree with. But in regards of the business community wanting to participate, fund in particular programs, I mean, what, first of all, what are they looking for in programs? You know, I guess what I'm hearing is some, something in technology and in science, you know, because of the businesses that are in Emeryville, you know, per se.
Not only because of business, Miguel, but I mean, that's the real world today.
Right.
What, what we need to all do a better job of, when we've had career days in the past, sponsored by whatever organization, and the kids go to various companies. One of the first questions they ask the students, how much money do you have? And if they see somebody who looks like them, who says, I'm making eighty thousand dollars, now they're interested. So what, what the, the companies and the political, the greater political world, we have developed a tremendous relationship with our Congresswoman, with our state senator, with our member of the state's assembly. And, and they have really been supportive. They all supported our bond major, right? They have been tremendous supporters of the Center of Community Life. Nancy Skinner carried a bill that made some of it possible. So we've had, but also those elected officials in this world where money, again, it's not about the money, it's about the money, we've been able to demonstrate appreciation and support for them from our business community. So, I mean, it's all intermingled and it's all, so everybody's trying to work together in a difficult situation.
So what I'm, what I'm also hearing you say is that, you know, the business community is committed to funding certain programs in technology and science. I guess my question, and I think I heard you say this also, are they also willing to provide internships? Because personally, you know, I am an advocate of this linked learning. And I would like to see, I mean, one of our pillars a few years ago, you know, was to allow our students to, all students to have internships. And, you know, we've lost that connection with the business community because what I'm hearing you say is that one of the issues that businesses have is they can't find, you know, students to come in and be able to perform.
Well, that's true, but it also, internships, honestly, Miguel, there's nothing magic about that. And it costs a lot of money to manage. It costs the district money to have, you've got to allocate somebody who's going to, to help get those students recruited and understand what is needed. It costs the businesses a lot of money. What we learned is that they had to, and some of them said, we just can't do it. We can't afford. And here's the challenge. Some of the interns would go to these companies and honestly, they didn't understand about they had to be there on time. That they had to be dressed neatly. And they couldn't communicate orally in ways that could be understood. So there are challenges that we all have and they're definitely interested, but they're not going to commit at this stage, I can tell you, internships.
Okay, so what are they willing to commit, dollars?
Well, they're committing dollars regularly and if we can't get them because there's something in Emery, we're getting, if we get them to commit to the Cal State East Bay, they're anxious to commit. They need something to happen.
I mean, I guess what I'm trying, you know, and maybe some other people at the table, you know, to understand it, I don't, I'm, what do they want us to do? What does the business community want us to do?
If I can just, what I've, what I've heard, and I think our purpose here today is to be crystal clear in the needs of our kids. And what I'm hearing is, we know our kids need employment and they need careers and we're setting the foundation. And what I've heard is that the business community is invested in that foundation because the employees that are coming in don't have the foundation. So my understanding of today's task and the business community's need is to be crystal clear about the shape and strength of that foundation and what our thrust is as a district because we can't do everything. No organization can do everything. We have to decide what's our, what are we going to be the best at? And what I'm hearing is that in science and math and these fields.
Engineering.
Engineering, there's a huge need for an organization to be the best at, or organizations to be the best at that. We're going to be talking about a number of different focuses we can have, but if we have multiple focuses, then we're out of focus. And so to the degree that we can have one focus, the offer that I heard put on the table this morning is, you tell us with crystal clarity.
What's your name?
What you need. And then whether or not that looks like interns or mentorships or this or that.
Find a way to.
We'll count on staff to sort of scaffold, what we need first is this. And then staff will say, once you have this, then we need this. But if we, if we as a board look at which piece, then we can get them out of order, then we're getting the internships before the scaffolding is in place for the students to use those internships. So staff needs to tell us what are the building blocks. We as a board need to set the foundation and say, the house we're going to build.
It looks like this.
Is on the ground of.
One of the things that struck me yesterday at lunch was, that concerned that these buildings, schools are empty most of the time. And we're never going to be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish with our children if we don't have really valid, worthwhile after-school programs and summer programs. It accomplishes all kinds of things. And there is an understanding that we really need. We don't want to lose anybody. So what we're talking about at Mandela is the older children. But we're also, we know if we haven't captivated children by the third grade, they're never going to catch up. We really need to have an emphasis on preschool and kindergarten and the first three grades because we can't, we don't want, we don't want to lose another generation of students. And, and there's an interest. And, and there's, interesting to me that the business community is, has got that. And so what, and the Emory Ed Fund is a mechanism that makes it possible to fund these things because it's easy for them to make donations to the Emory Ed Fund. They're fully taxed, adoptable, all that sort of stuff. Without going through a complicated thing. So we just ought to make use of that if we can.
Let me first apologize to my fellow board members. Come in. Come in late. Sometimes one spouse forgets that there's a special board retreat on Saturday morning and goes about her normal routine, giving one's child, otherwise I'm careful. Take care of that. But secondly, to, to your point, John, about the K to three, I think, I think that's right. I think we're doing a good job, K to three. I think that we're doing our strongest job, K to three. Obviously, we also need, we need to do K-12 because we're losing a lot of our investment in K to three. Many of the students are not staying through middle school and into high school. And, you know, we're, we're getting other students transfer in who didn't have the advantage of our K to three. So, you know, I think we want to, if we build a strong program and have a good thrust, we'll, we'll be able to retain those students and reap the benefits of that early investment.
But John, I'll tell you, one of the things that I think we can all do a better job is providing information. The business community has no idea that Emory Unified is doing good with the Earl because we haven't found an effective way to communicate. And that's one of the things that we need to do. When it comes to this STEM stuff, one of the things that made in the last ten years Emory Unified different was that when we would send a lobbying group to DC or up to Sacramento, unlike other communities, we were sending the leadership from the school district, from the city, and from the business community together. That was unusual. Now we have a significant advantage in that the city manager has a degree in mechanical engineering from MIT. She knows and appreciates the whole STEM thing. We need to take advantage of that in our partnership with the city. So as you're looking and interviewing candidates for superintendent, I think that these are some of the things that might be talked about is the partnership with the city, the Emory Ed Fund, STEM programs, and working and using the business community and that support.
Any other questions for John while we have him? Folks on the round, around the table if you want?
The outer round of the table.
It's like, I think I'll be talking some more when I'm ready to talk, but I appreciate some of the things you've highlighted. First of all, we've just put together with Stephanie Couch, eighty thousand dollars that we're going to be working on for professional development for middle school teachers and working on shoring up our program there. I'm going to be the project director and we're going to be partnering with other schools. We are moving in that direction. Couple of the comments, I also have been working on fourteen of the partnership with Lighthouse Community Charter School and was there yesterday. They are doing like a thrust in what's called Maker Ed, which again, I'm going to share with you more about what that's about. But one of the things, and one of the people who was there yesterday was Bruce Simon, who was also from the county, who's been working on after-school programs. So all of these things, we are really working on them. It's part of my wanting to be retired so that I could work on some of these things. But one of the comments that came up that I thought was very interesting with respect to your comments that when the interns come in or when people come into these companies, they really can't do these foundational things, which aren't really the STEM things, they're foundational things. One of the things that, again, through this Maker Ed, they were coming to realize is that this very practical kinds of things you can give kids in schools gives them the impetus to realize that you actually have to be able to compute, you have to be able to read in order to make things they are motivated to make. But it was also that they were finding at Cal State East Bay, for example, in the engineering program, they could graduate people in engineering who know the math, who know the schemes, who know how to do all of that stuff, but they've had no practical experience. So they're sending them back to the community college to the entry level, hands-on engineering things. So there's a lot of things that we need to think about that our real thrust has to be about how do we give the kids the motivations that they want to learn things? So I, I just wanted to piggyback on it because it was, we were having such a deep conversation about it literally yesterday and talking about how we do the funding to, to bring some of those things, both in terms of after-school program, professional development for teachers, et cetera.
Well, I tell you, as the president of these, I think Philip will agree with me, what we would welcome is the district presenting to Philip some specific needs, programs that you want and you need funding for. That's what used to happen some years ago.
I used to write those programs.
And, and that made it, look, I've learned, I'm only really good at one thing. I have no technical knowledge. I'm good at getting people to donate money. So if, if you give me some tools, if you give Philip some tools, then we have something that we can take to these companies and say, here's a program, lay it out and get them excited about it. We need your commitment. We need a three-year commitment or twenty thousand dollars a year or whatever the case may be. So we're inviting you to.
Invest, yeah. Invite me to invest.
One of the things that, hi John, one of the things that, that I was interested in too, in what you were saying, and we're doing this now, is communication. Communication of what we've done, what we are, what we're successful at, what we're not so successful at. Not only to let people know what's going on, but to also to get, engender lots of information coming back to us because there's so many people out there who could help us with whatever, but they don't even know we're even asking for it. So in the cabinet, just to let you know, one of the things we've been working on internally is because we realized in order for us to be successful, we have to outreach to all kinds of different folks. We've been working on five ways of communicating that's successful for us and trying to figure out how do we do it, who's responsible for it and all the rest. So we set up the structure to do that. We can also maybe add on in, in cabinet discussion, looking at how do we also give that information out to the, not only specifically the business community, but other communities too because they need to know what we are and who we are. We all think that everybody does, but maybe they don't. And, and I, I see this sometimes when I'm going out to look for interns for social work and I go to Cal State East Bay and they go, you mean there's a school district in Emoryville? How is that going to be when we have our neighbors who say the same thing? So what we have, what we do and what we are, given our bandwidth and it's difficult, we have to look at that too. So it is something that we're, we're checking out and putting forward.
And that's, that's a good point on several, I, I just would like to emphasize, because we're going to be heading into elections and to perhaps reshopping the parcel tax. One of the things that I have found most effective, because we have a lot of residents of Emoryville who don't have children in the school system, so they have no experience with it. And they say, well, why do we have schools? Why don't we just go to Berkeley or Oakland? And there are, the most effective answer that I have learned is, well, that can happen. And if we don't support our schools and help them really function well, that's going to be forced to happen. And when that does, you property owner, are then going to be forced to pay the parcel taxes of either Berkeley or Oakland. And then you outline what that is, which is many times what our minimum parcel tax is. There's one thing, they understand that. I mean, that's an easy sell to them. The other thing I think is that I had, my mother is now a resident of Bayside Park. And this week, we had a Congresswoman privately, her mother, Mildred Massey, over to visit and to have dinner there. And she was asking, she said, you know, people don't, they think that because there's no more earmarks that we can't do any of that, but there are lots of ways that we can get things accomplished. And she has a particular interest in Emoryville. And this past summer, she had custody of her two granddaughters for a while. And in order to, to help her, we enrolled them in our summer, our grandchildren. The girls absolutely loved it. They don't want to go back to Chicago. They wanted to stay here. So the Congresswoman was captivated by their interest in when she would pick them up, she would come in and visit. And she said, boy, if people only knew what you folks in Emoryville are doing. And we have, you have one of the most creative and effective lobbyists in Sacramento in towns and public affairs, Nicolau DeLuca. I just will share this with you before I leave. I was up in Sacramento several months ago and visiting, among others, with Diana Griffiths, who is Nancy Skinner's chief of staff. And I said, oh, I heard some nice things about you from a fan. And she said, who would that be? And I said, he's a good-looking young man. And she said, Nicolau DeLuca. And I said, yes. She said, John, let me tell you something. I've been in Sacramento for twenty-five years. I was chief of staff of the speaker for a while, previous to the current speaker. And I came back because Nancy Skinner is so effective and so committed to the things that I believe in. By the way, Diana's made Nancy twice as effective as she was before in the last year and a half. She said, Diana said, I want to tell you about Nicolau DeLuca. In all the years I've been in Sacramento, he's the most effective advocate for local government. And I said, well, tell me a little bit about that. And she said, first of all, he never exaggerates or overstates the case. He is willing to look at unorthodox ways to get some funding. He really is cooperative and understands our challenges. So he's somebody that I go to and call on to help understand certain things. And she said, he is really, I always want to help Nicolau and his clients. So when I left, I called Nicolau and said, you better go get that on tape. But it's one of the things that you have a challenge in at the moment without having a full-time superintendent. So somebody needs to be communicating directly and just saying, here's areas that we could use some funding. What do you?
Well, I'm, I'm listening. I have a neighbor that can help me call him.
And, and because what I have learned is he is really good at, you know, he'll go to some recreation program to come up with something in the library. I mean, and it's just interesting that he thinks outside the box and can come up with things. So I would encourage you to take advantage of that resource.
Please.
Just a couple of thoughts, a little bit to piggyback on what Carol said, but I, you know, it's, it's probably sometimes not appropriate for a short timer to share, share some thoughts. But I think there's no question that I think establishment of research-based programs that basically increase the skills, the foundational skills for students is important. My observation, though I haven't been here three years before, is that, and this has kind of really come to me, particularly with my work in Hawaii Public Schools, many board members know, we're working with Hawaii Department of Ed to revitalize the Hawaii Public Schools, which has for decades had a reputation of being a poor system. And I've been to about twenty-six elementary schools. The next three weeks I'll be visiting twelve more. And as you know, Hawaii State of Hawaii received race to the top five, which ends this year. So they were able to jumpstart a lot of programs. And I have to say, I've been very impressed with what I've seen in the elementary schools. It really turned around the schools. But it's not just because of the programs they put in place because there are dozens of programs out there. The administrators in this field know, I mean, it's like you're always kind of bombarded by all these vendors with these programs. So while the establishment of really sound programs are important, one of the things that we're learning in what's happening in Hawaii is this whole thrust of preparing kids to be college and career-ready has to start at the elementary grade segment. And so in every school I visit, I always talk to groups of students and we ask them questions about what they're doing in school every day. And one of the things I've been very impressed with is even the kindergarten students, when you ask them, why is your teacher asking you to do the work that you're doing in class? They're all able to articulate, because these things, we need to learn these things because they'll help us later in life. So, so that kind of paired with my previous experience here, I think there's another piece to what we need to do. And that is, we need to help our students make a connection to their future. I think for a lot of our students, you know, they come to school, they know the teachers are making them do work. They probably could even tell you, yeah, we need to learn these things. But for a lot of our students, they don't have that long-term future goal in perspective. And I think that starts at a very young age. They need to integrate those messages. And then the question is, what kinds of messages are staff giving the children? What is, what are those messages? What are those values that we want our teachers, K-12, to, on a daily basis, have our students hear so that they can begin to formulate during their age, an idea of, we're here in school because we need to learn things that will help us as adults? And I think that's, you know, so while you look at programs, really strong programs that will help build those skills, we also need to remember that for many of our students, they don't have that necessarily, that long-term connection to why they're here. And I think staff needs to think of strategies for how we help the students develop that sense. So that when we interview kindergarten, first grade kids at Anna Yates, and we ask them, why are your teachers making you do the things you are, that they can begin to clearly articulate that this is going to help them in the future. I think sometimes that connection between what we do in school with many of our students, that connection is really not as strong as it could be. And so, I mean.
So have you completed your application?
So, I mean, so I know John has to leave. Oh, and, and I know, I just wanted to state that it was, it was a good entry in terms of what staff has been doing. Because there has been, you're right, there's been a disconnect. And disconnect has been the people who have done, who's doing the work has not, I don't know where it is, has, whatever that liaison or that internal versus external, you know, operations has not connected. So, so what, John, what you stated this morning, the conversations with Juliette, CJ, Will, Philip, myself, Carol, other teachers, that's the kind of work we've been doing. So when you talk about technology, the STEM was California State East Bay, John Quinn just signed a letter for Career Technical Education, which is now, Career Technical Education is the old linked learning. There's a difference in terms of what that is. Post-secondary opportunities, intern, the, even, even the internships. And I think you hit on some pieces where what we have struggled with is the capacity... And I think you hit on some pieces where what we have struggled with is the capacity, we have capacity, but we only have so much. The bandwidth, and so when you talk about that, that it takes work to manage interns, every program we put on the table, someone has to manage it. And so therefore, if we have to manage it, that means something is going to come off of my plate, or off of Juliette's plate, or off of Mark's plate, or off of Will's plate, or off of CJ's plate. And I think those are things that we have to be considerate about. The other piece is that to do these programs, you must plan, and that's some of the, what Carol will talk about later, is that we have to have adequate planning time. When those schools have race to the top money trust in their applications, they have plenty of planning time. You cannot have, here's the money, do this program, and then, then one of us will magically from our, you know, nowhere, will make a program happen. But however, we've actually done a pretty good job of doing that. So there are things that someone has, has shown at our door, hey, you have money, in three or four days or two weeks, we might try to make it happen. But what we know is that, one, not so much that it's not sustainable, but it's burned us out. So those of us who have been here, where we are, we know that we're not doing our best work. So because we're doing so much, we need, we cannot do our best work. So for the reports that you state, you know, why is it so hard to get that? For the last five or six years, I think even when John, when John was here, we, most districts have someone, that's all they do is data. We don't have that. We have an IT person who's trying to be a data person. And when John, Sugiyama was here, it was John Perry, it was Marty Procasio, it was John Sugiyama, it was myself, who tried to create data in addition to the jobs that we already had. Prior to that, Joe Franks was the person who did our data. So every, so what, the topics that you're stating, you're hitting, you're hitting it head-on, and all of us have had that conversation, which is why, this is, this is why staff is going to introduce, while we believe that, to enter, to address all of those issues, we must enter through a college prep thrust. And so that's the conversation for today, but I just, but I know that you have to leave. And just to be assured that we've had those conversations, it's more of how can we communicate those, that's another area. Communication, outreach, being volunteer, et cetera, someone has to manage. Why is it perfect for Carol to come out of retirement? Because that's exactly what she can do, she can be a project manager. All these are projects, and someone needs to manage it. So we're all trying to manage while we actually do our job at the same time. So I didn't know, you know, I know maybe we'll have the opportunity to talk some more, but in the years that I've been here, the disconnect has been that you have someone who, who will go out and will, I guess, solicit funds, or, you know, go to companies, or try to write grants. But no one internally has been at the table to write it. Or no one internally has been at the table to say, this is, this, we need this, however, we have to match it to what a private organization says, but this is what we want it for. So I think those logistics or those semantics have not been addressed. And that's what I've learned, actually being at the last Emory Ed Fund Board meeting, is that just the song and dance, the dance between private, what private funders want, what public, you know, funders want in terms of grants. So the, so the table that we sit at, I do, Carol does, Will should, but he can't because of his bandwidth. We sit at tables where there are 20 people around the table from community colleges, different LEAs. Why? Because the funding is limited, and they want you to come in and sort them. Juliette, she used to give money a long time ago for wellness, it would come in like this. Why is it hard now? Because people want us to be a large organization. We're tiny. So now, before, we could just apply for the grant. Now we have to go build partnerships, it takes time. So that means I have to, you know, whether it's one of us leaving campus or leaving their jobs and spending all day, sitting all day in a meeting, we have to leave to do the dance. So we can actually build partnerships with our other neighboring districts. Then we have to do the partnerships with, with colleges because the new thing is the career technical education and Common Core, and it's from school to career. So, and I'm pretty sure John has been in plenty of those planning meetings as well, maybe in Hawaii. It takes, it takes time. So I think we've, we are trying to address, we're trying to learn our lessons, we're learning from our, from our lessons. And I think addressing some of the key issues that you've stated, which is not necessarily the hot word of STEAM or STEM, because we focused on programs versus focusing on the building blocks to actually have children be able to be college-ready or career-ready.
So one of the things you don't want to do here is the downside of the fact that Hawaii is, people are getting burned down. There is so much stuff coming down from the Hawaii State Department of Ed, that in every single school, people are, they're having a huge influx of people who are retiring because they said, no, I can't handle this. They're doing too many things. They're doing a lot of great things, but they're doing too many things. And one of the things we're finding, as an outside agency coming in and working with us, they got to both create a focus. They've got to identify the key issues, and that's what they've got to focus on. It's not about doing 30 things, different things. Because you can always identify 30 things. It's like, what are the five to 10 most important things? And how are we going to really focus on that? Because your capacity is a major issue. I mean, I was always amazed in a little district like Emory, how many things are going on here? And Anna Kruj is right. If the funding source came in, we always found the need for it, and we were able to mobilize quickly. So I think one of the positive things about this community is, when resources are there, we can respond quickly. We, we have responded quickly. But I think that there needs to be kind of, like you said, in order for you to kind of go to the people who are willing to support a district and the students, is the district needs to develop that focus of, here are the five most important things we need to focus on, because we can't manage 30 different things. But these are the five things which will make the greatest difference.
Yeah, and I wanted to add to that, that we, as a district, need to be more appreciative of things, of what we have with Eave. I mean, the power that Eave has for this district. We have two small schools with major corporations willing to contribute, and the city. I mean, the city just is now willing to consider an MOU or bringing on another position to do grant writing and to do fundraising. The city's committed to working with us. What we need to do is, first of all, tell, as John said, tell Eave what we need. But also, as, as you said, John, we need to tell you how we're going to report back to you on how those funds are being used. The business meeting wants to know what we're doing with the money. And I think that's a fairly simple thing to do, is come up with not just what we need, but this is how we're going to use it, and this is how we're going to let you know how it was used and how much it was appreciated. But it's important, it's really nice of John to come and spend the time with us today and to, to give us that input.
And just one last question for John before we go. Yeah, well, it was just kind of a piggybacking on what the last three comments were, is that as we think about what we want to tell Eave that we need, we need from the business community, to be smart about how we couch our proposals. So I wasn't joking, I wasn't just kidding around when I said I retired so that I could do this kind of work. Literally, when I was in the classroom, I saw the needs, I saw the big picture things. There was not anywhere close to the time that was needed to develop, go out and develop the relationship, to spend a whole day at Lighthouse, to sit down with Stephanie Couch. We've been trying for two years, but when I was in the classroom, we couldn't have the follow-up meetings. So one of the things that needs to be built in, and I've done work like this before, Emory as well, around the internships, build into our proposals that, yes, we want to do this after-school program, we want to do this internship program, whatever it is, we want to do this STEM in-school thing, whatever it is, that instead of saying, okay, and such and such staff that we already have is going to do all the work of managing, et cetera, build in extra money to hire somebody to do some project management. There are people. So one of the beauties of this little bit of money we just got is that Stephanie and I, and Anna Kruj, as we planned it, there's money in there for a project director who's not in the classroom, who's not already doing 14 things in the district. That has to be part of the model, is there are people there who are retired, or who are in the community, or who are educators you can hire for part-time, whatever, to do that kind of project. And I think it's a very important.
I appreciate that, and I just wanted to take advantage of that and saying that Rich Robbins has been very supportive financially to Stephanie Couch and her program. A month ago, he said, look, you're asking for more money, and I'll put it in, but I want Emory included. You've got to have something, right? So that's where that money came from.
No, I realize that.
All right, thank you all very much. I'll let you get to the hard work.
Thank you.
So we're going to transition now to Ms. Adeline, and she has her presentation on, on, uh, DC of the.
So, so I think, I may not use all of the slides that are here, because I, because I want to definitely give the opportunity to, some of the, some of our staff has come here to present. And so just from the purpose, and just to start off, our, our recommendation would be to focus on our schools as a college prep model, college preparatory. And so, so we want to identify an area of emphasis to, to prepare students for acceptance to college and university study. We want to build a solid foundation for college and university study. We want to prepare students for post-secondary opportunities, which are the Mandela programs, or programs that focus a lot on career technical work. And we also want to market our schools as viable options for families and students, and to maximize our resources. So, and while, and so this here has come up over and over again, and this is what we want to prepare our students for. I'm sorry. It doesn't change the marketing figure. I was like, it's not changing. So our, so I would say, the goals of a college prep program is to, and I'll say, and I'll, and I'll, let me back up. It's not even college prep programs, like, so we're looking at actually what our schools are, college prep school, or whether it be a STEM or STEAM school. So to build a solid foundation, college prep, you want to build a solid foundation for college and university study, you want to offer rigorous course study, and you want to develop the students as a well-rounded individuals emphasizing leadership, character, and intel, intellectual competence, which is, which focuses on our community schools, in terms of how do you actually educate and support the whole student. When you look at STEAM, it promotes and prepares students for post-secondary education in careers in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics careers, something that John had touched on. Develop competent, capable citizens in our technology-dependent democratic society. And then the arts enhances developmental critical thinking skills, developing more interest in STEM courses. So it's very specific what a STEM or STEAM school does, but both of them actually want to have students who are very competent, contributing to society. So what, so for us, what is, what will give us the leverage? Which thrust will give us the best leverage to prepare our students for post-secondary opportunities based on our current reality and resources? So it's basically looking at building off what we have. And I think I want to not go further, but talk about building off what we have in terms of college preparatory. And then afterwards, we'll talk about those strands, or those programs in a college prep school that actually focus on science, the technology, engineering, mathematics, and the arts. So I'll, so we'll start off first by stating, talking about the work that we've done. And I'll have Will talk about that, and we're focusing on the high school right now, mathematically, because the high school has been an area where we've seen, I mean, how many students are getting into college, how many students are actually applying to college, how many of them are prepared. And before he starts, I want to give you all this. So we right now, currently, we have a team that works with students in terms of college. What I'm going to give you are the, are the requirements for children to get into a, into UCs. And so while we look at our A through G requirements, I wanted to give you all the 14 categories that children, that children need in order to actually be eligible for a UC. So because if we start there, that's sort of what you state is in the middle, you know, you have UCs, you have your Ivy League colleges, you have community colleges, you also have your California State universities. So everyone knows about the A through G. In our high schools, you have to be ranked in the top 9% to even be eligible for a UC. So if you're not in the top 9%, you're not going to a UC in our, in our schools. The, and so, and the only time that you can do that afterwards is once they've already had acceptances at UCs, if there's some opening and you may have appealed, you'll be able to actually be eligible. But on the back of the page, you will see there's 14 criteria that, that UCs look at in order to admit students. So, and it's not just based on grades, and it's not based on, it's based on test scores. But those 14 criteria, each UC has that. Now, they may rank it in different orders, so UC Davis may start with number 10, and then have number nine, and number eight. Or UC Berkeley may have a different criteria, but this is, but each campus uses the same 14 factors, they just apply them differently. So when you look at it, you have, we have to have students that have an academic grade point average, basically in a 3.0, have completed all A through G courses, and have completed them with a C or better. We need students who have, who basically score well in the ACT and the SATs test. The number of content and performance in academic courses beyond the minimum A through G requirements. So meaning that, when CJ talks about what courses we have, I wanted to talk about how many courses do we have above and beyond, which is the A through G, which aren't minimum. That's the criteria that they look at for UC Berkeley, or UCs. Number four is the number of performance in UC-approved honors, advanced placement, IB classes, transferable college courses. When Will or CJ goes, I mean, addresses the courses, we, currently, we have one AB class, and that's in calculus. And then they'll talk about what we have concurrently for concurrent enrollment with Berkeley City College. Number five, identification, UC is being ranked in the top 9% of your high school class at the end of your junior year. So when we state that, why, why is it that we don't have a lot of students who apply to UC, or accept to UC, they're not in the top 9%? That's why. So it doesn't matter if we had 1,000 students, 20 students, 50 students, if you're not in the top 9%, that's the politics of, of basically applying to college. Number six, quality of your senior year program is measured by the type and number of academic courses in progress or planned. How many quality courses do we have available for seniors? Our A through G requirements, most of our students are finished by their junior year. In their senior year, the only two classes they need to take are their English class and their econ and government. So therefore, they have what, about four more classes they can take. What do we offer our seniors, because we only have 13 full-time teachers? So this is something that our students can't necessarily compete with, or we want them to actually compete with. Number eight, outstanding performance in one or more specific subjects areas, we, a lot of our 9%, they actually do well in that. Number nine, outstanding work in more, in one or more special projects in the academic field of study. How rigorous are our, our courses to make sure that they can actually write about that or identify a special project? Number 10, recent marked improvement in academic performance is demonstrated by academic GPA, quality of coursework completed or processed. So they look at the student, see if they maintain As, or if they've made dramatic improvements over time, which then goes back to, do we have the tutoring that we need at our schools? Do we have the support systems that we need at our schools? Do we have the intervention that we need at our schools? And that's the work, we may not have time today, but that's some of the work in terms of our learning center that Karen can, can talk about, and some of those challenges. So do we have that to even show that a child can draw it in the ninth grade, and not do well, but by the time they get to the 12th grade, they've actually shown improvement? Do we have the support systems there? Number 11 is special talents, achievements, and awards in particular field. So this is just visual performing arts, written and oral proficiency. So these are the enrichment classes, or, and without reading all of that, you all can. But enrichment classes, do we have enough for leadership? Do we have enough that every child is able to, to write about this in their personal statement? Number 12 is completion of special projects undertaken in a context of your high school curriculum, or conjunction with special school events program, projects or programs. So another layer, just of making sure that we have extracurricular and rigorous programs in our courses, and not something that's always necessarily external. And then 13, academic accomplishments in light of your life experiences, special circumstances, including to, not limited to disabilities, low family income, first generation to attend college, need to work, disadvantaged, social, educational environment, et cetera. Which is why it's critical for us to have our wellness program, our family resource center, so we can actually support students and their families when, when we do have children who are in this category, which we have several, to a lot, too many in number 13. So what support services do we have? And are there services that we can sustain? And do we have enough manpower to actually be able to support our children? So I think I wanted to start off with that, and then the location of your secondary school and residence. So are you in accredited university, I mean, cop school? Are you in a school where there is a lot of crime, you know, or, or hardship? And then they also declare whether you're in a affluent area. So, so when you apply, students don't know how these 14 areas apply, I mean, are applied to the application, they just know it, it does. So these are, this is what we need to, to prepare our children in order to get into college. There's still, in my opinion, a disconnect between college and actually what you do in your career, so some of us. There's still, in my opinion, a disconnect between college and actually what you do in your career, so some of us have experienced that. What I learned in college has nothing to do with what I'm doing right now. So it's the same when we talk about our technical careers, which is why they're bringing in career technical education. But, um, at this time, I would like, uh, Will, if you can just talk a little bit about what we're doing now in terms of, um, preparing students for college and what we want, our partnerships with Berkeley City College and some of the future endeavors. And where's some of, you know, the challenges that we have?
So, uh, thinking about what are we doing now in order to prepare our students or support our students more, um, for, uh, for college? Um, we created a college committee this year and what we've done, there's six of us and we've taken, uh, our senior class and separated them into, or should I say better, better word, grouped them, um, where we can give intimate support, um, as opposed to one counselor trying to provide support for two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty students. Uh, we've taken our senior class and we have six actual staff members who are, um, providing that support. Um, and we're getting guidance from College Track, who's showing to be very successful, um, in getting students from urban communities into college. Uh, the difference is, what we're doing, the difference is, uh, College Track will take five to ten students from, you know, all of the campuses, high schools in Oakland. Um, and then those students have to get to College Track building however they can, and then they go through the process, they still receive the support. Um, but, uh, what we're doing is actually taking the College Track strategies. We have a College Track support person that comes to our campus once a week. We meet and we, we go through, uh, you know, ideas of how we can best serve every secondary high school, uh, or every, every secondary school, uh, with the College Track strategies. Um, it's a way to provide that support to all of our students, our seniors, as opposed to, um, just the five to ten of them. Um, something else, uh, that we, that we're, we're shooting for, so what I'm talking about is what we have now as well as, um, things that we will have, uh, or will be doing. Um, we're taking this strategy that we've worked with the seniors this year. We've been pretty successful, um, in college application, uh, support, personal statement, financial aid, FASFA, um, and actually, um, you know, really building an interest in college, um, uh, in, inside of these students. Uh, but we'll be taking that now that we're going with the seniors, uh, in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. We're, we're, uh, pushing it back, so we're doing it, starting with the eleventh graders, tenth graders, um, as well as ninth graders. So once a, a student steps on our campus, they'll immediately already be getting the College Track support. Uh, but we have to come up with a different name where we become our, um, our actual, uh, support and how we are preparing students um, from day one into ninth grade, um, for, for college. Um, something else that we, uh, have right now, we have, uh, Berkeley City College that comes to our campus and provides two courses, um, per semester for our seniors. Um, something that we're trying to do is, or we're really working on, we, we actually, um, have the plan and we, we, we have everything, uh, already set. But now we're, we're working with the Berkeley City, uh, personnel in order to make this happen. Um, but what we want to do is offer more courses, um, on our campus, uh, not just the two during the school day. We want to offer more courses, um, uh, after school, um, and if we can offer more during the school day as well.
What are the two, uh, courses?
Right now we have, uh, it's English and we have, uh, uh, communication, communications.
English one A or is that bonehead English?
English one oh one B and then all of them.
So, yeah, so.
I didn't mean it's good.
No, so I mean, I won't, what I'll say is not, yeah, it's not.
I'm not from the old school, that's what I say.
Yeah, it's not, so, so what, so what colleges are finding, and even Berkeley City was working with high school students, is that they're not prepared, I mean, they're not prepared to actually take an English one A course. And so, um, in this program, uh, students at the end of their course, they can actually take, um, they can take a test. And if they pass the test, they'll be, they'll actually, they won't have to take English one A in college, so.
So is the communication class a public speaking class?
Yes. So with those questions, um, wanting to offer this earlier, as we said, some of the, some of the things we're doing with seniors, we want to offer that as early as eleventh grade. Um, so wanting to provide an opportunity for our, uh, eleventh graders as well, um, to take this, the, the Berkeley City courses. So, um, the plan, um, that we have out there right now is that we want to have our students graduate from, or have an opportunity to graduate from high school uh, with a one-year certification, uh, from, uh, Berkeley City or Berkeley College. Um, so that's, that's the plan that we're pushing forward, um, and hopefully we'll be able to make that happen.
In other words, that gives our students the option of either if they meet the requirements for a UC or CSU to go that route or to complete their AA degree, uh, by just completing one, one year at the time. So it opens up a kind of multiple avenues.
Correct, correct.
So in effectuating that, is the student, or taking a whole load of, uh, community college courses their senior years?
So, right.
Go back and forth between the Berkeley campus and the Cal campus?
So the idea is to bring, so there's, there's different ways to bring, but bring the actual service of Berkeley City College to our campus. So students don't have to go back and forth or whatever else.
But, but bring so much of it that they, they can, they're not going to high school anymore, it's just.
They're, they're, so these are, these are.
Concurrent enrollment.
Concurrent, concurrent enrollment, right. After school, uh, it would be after school courses, um, as well as the, the two that we have already going on as well as summer courses. So it'd be a, 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 basically, uh, I believe it was, three actual school semesters and two summers, um, that they would be able to complete. Just work, and they would still be, uh, taking the senior courses.
One of the things to follow away for future planning is at the time when I was here, in conversations with Betty, I don't know if she's still present at the, at City College.
Yeah, no, it's Deborah Bud.
Okay. Uh, but there were conversations with them about their interest in developing a satellite campus here. Which we, because one of the issues for our students is, you know, if courses are offered on-site here, it makes it more stressful for our students. They said our kids can go over to Berkeley, but then, you know, there's that whole issue of getting over there, so.
So that's the conversation John, so John and I, it's, it's like four or five Johns here. I'm like John G., John Q., John A. So we met with Debbie Bud. And I think the, what started the interest is to have a satellite campus. The conversations that John and I had and then with Will, CJ, myself had with Carlos, who was another liaison, is that we have to guarantee there's thirty people in that class. So at this moment in time, from the conversation we gathered, they're not interested yet. They want to see what will happen with the new campus, because that may attract people to want to have classes at a new campus versus an elementary or school site. So that's still there, it's just, it's just not, um, they're not ready to make that commitment right now.
And they also expressed the willingness to, to pay for our teachers to teach the courses if they have a master's degree in it, which is great. The other thing I just wanted to bring out, because I'm gonna have to go, I have a funeral service to go to, is it's wonderful the things that you're doing and the discussion we'll have about how we can, uh, improve our high school, which is, is, uh, the focus is. Uh, and as Will would point out, that there'll always be a nine percent, there's always gonna be a top nine percent that you see down, that, that we can do more and prepare them. But it's that ninety-one percent that we, we really have to start zeroing in on, the ones that, to get to the CSU's and the, and the community colleges. And what John Gooding pointed out and what, uh, John Apple has pointed out, the early education piece is so darn important. We start to lose kids in the middle school grades, six, seven, eight. So when they get to nine, that's where your biggest dropout happens. And so as we, we can also focus on those middle grades to get those kids prepared to come into high school. We'll hold on to them and then the programs are there for them, they're wonderful.
So I think that was, I mean, and that, that is, that's the reason I think for the K eight, is that you actually, Will, we saw, we saw, I mean, even though there's some things that you have to definitely iron out.
Right.
But we saw the academic piece actually improved versus when there was seven twelve campus versus, and, and we did that this first year, seven twelve campus versus the nine twelve campus or K eight campus, that the academic scores improved. So while, again, it's not where it needs to be, we know, we also know, we also know that we have to start with the early education. However, that conversation has always been there. What we haven't had a conversation is here at the high school. So when we state that we lose, we, stu-, schools lose students all over from middle school to ninth grade. But I think if we talk, if we think about where we want our children to be, we can back map. And, and make sure that we have a solid foundation.
The, the reason I bring it up is in my years in San Francisco, the San Francisco United Field has several K eight schools and mostly middle schools, uh, six, eight. I did a study of ninth graders who dropped out or who were failing the ninth grade, four Ds, four Fs each semester and then eventually dropped out. Virtually ninety-five percent of those kids came from the six, eight structures. The K eight structures, not, virtually none were unsuccessful in high school. And it's not that the middle school was a bad idea, it's just that the kids who tend to, to drop out are losing it in six, seven, eight. A lot of those kids are successful coming from six, seven, eight, but that's the focus. So we can zero in on that six, seven, eight structure and keep those kids prepared for that.
So there's something else, thinking about, uh, ninety-one percent, thinking about the one hundred percent, um, figuring out, or what we'll do is have them, uh, have a commitment to summer activities. Um, so thinking about, uh, summer enrichment, summer academic programs, internships, we're having discussions right now with the city, talking about internship opportunities. Uh, we have a, uh, uh, academic summer achievement program for eighth graders that are transitioning into ninth grade. Um, and we're actually trying to, uh, include a STEM component. Uh, Dr. Ralph has given us an opportunity to, uh, not just do, uh, you know, the, the, the college preparation, uh, English and, and math preparation, but also, uh, taking and include a STEM component, um, to, to give us a better opportunity for, to give us a better, uh, experience. Um, which is, uh, helpful from CSU's side. Uh, but just thinking about different things, we want each of our students to have something that they're doing over the summer, whether it's job, internship, um, program that they're, we're sending them to UC Berkeley for a program. Upward Bound, um, actually came to us, um, this last week wanting to, uh, to do some things as well. So just committing to something over the summer, uh, summer, summer, uh, is important. Um, something else that John spoke about was the after-school program. Um, really have an after-school program that provides KC SAT, ACT support, um, or preparation, um, as well as doing the same thing that we did over the summer, getting rich with academic, academic opportunities. And then the last thing, thinking about, uh, what, we only have one AP course, uh, that we offer on our campus. Um, and, and, and a lot of it is gonna go into, uh, teacher training and how we prepare our students to take an AP course and be successful, um, in an AP course. Uh, but we're, we, we want to move to English, history, um, and, and, and we're looking into, uh, statistics. Um, and then the other thing is talking about CTE courses, um, and learning, uh, RFP courses, uh, those types of things, um, in order for all of our students to be, um, served. So thinking about what John, uh, presented earlier, thinking about kind of where we are. Um, we're, we're in a place where we're ready to relish the college prep, prep, uh, thrust, but figuring out how we can have, uh, a STEM, STEM as an element of that. Um, and that would be something that we can do over the summer, something after school, as well as, um, figuring out in maybe the CTE courses or, or something where we can start providing more, um, opportunities. But, um, if I was, if I was to speak to him right now and say what we need, we need, uh, teacher training, student preparation, um, and then fi- figuring out ways that we can provide those, uh, services, uh, after school, in the regular, uh, in the summer.
So, um, if I could, I'm coming on, CTE link learning thing. It is, link learning is, is not just, uh, CTE courses, you know, training students to go off and do, you know, traditional, you know, Boget kinds of careers. It, it's a deep, uh, it combines college and career training that, that is grounded in applying whatever it is. A focus on computers or medicine or, um, you know, hospitality industry. It could be any number of strands, but you're, you're doing it in a way that, at the end of high school, that the stu-, the, they had, the students have had a rich enough, um, you know, career tech, uh, courses and experiences in their internships, that they have had exposure to A to G. And if they do want to go to college.
Right.
Right, they can say, you know what, that, that was great, I learned, I had some great internships, I'm gonna go to the computer program market. But you know, I'm gonna go do science at UC Berkeley. And I'm ready because I, because my CTE courses were not like the old CTE courses that, that were just, uh.
Hands-on.
You weren't, they weren't A to G, they weren't A to G, um, level. I mean, it's satisfying to, but, but link learning, maybe it is for those career tech or even if they're career tech, they're challenging enough that, that they're satisfied if the students can maintain those skills, it's not attractive anyway.
So.
I think it's a very challenging, uh, different way to do CTE.
Well, that is, well, what you've described is CTE, like there isn't another way, where that's, that is the way. And so, well, we're, we are in, um, what is it called, the East Bay I eighty, eight eighty Consortium, uh, for Career Pathways Trust. So that is, it's headed by West Contra Costa and, um, there's several LEAs and community colleges that are part of it. Our, our focus will be technology, which is another piece in terms of, what I forgot to say, in terms of college prep, we want to focus on technology. We think technology is an area that no matter what field you or career you want to engage in, you need technical skills, twenty-first century skills. So that'll be our, our focus, while our neighboring, um, districts Berkeley, Albany, Oakland will have health, they'll have the science, et cetera. So we're, so in that case, it's very helpful to go through that consortium, because then someone else can manage it. So who's managing that is West Contra Costa and also Alameda County Office of Education. So, um, that's a grant that, um, we're applying for and hopefully, again, with that, we'll be able to have some more robust CTE, a true CTE program that will, that we can, um, benefit from our community colleges, our neighboring, our county office, and our neighboring districts. And they can manage that work versus we're trying to piecemeal the work together, you know, to make that happen.
So, I think that's a good direction to, to focus on technology, because it will cut across all different careers, as you said. One of the challenges we had here is when we went to the link learning workshops, you know, the challenge is, because we're small school, the typical model in, uh, large conference high school is to establish a number of academy programs that students can select, right? They have the connections with the world of work and whether they had internships or whatever as part of their coursework. The problem in a small school, when we went to the link learning folks, we talked to Gary, who was the head of link learning, there are no small school models, not, not any effective ones. In fact, they encouraged us, they, why don't you guys apply for a grant through Ermine to try to develop a small school model for link learning? So we didn't have the number of students to, to create a number of options. Remember we talked about, well, maybe since we're really strong in the arts, maybe art could be one, but the technology one probably is a really good area, given, you know, the focus on what's required in the workplace now. So let me follow up on that. The, I heard Will say that a broader focus on STEM, the college prep of the STEM, um, you know, broader kind of, and, and then I heard you say through this consortium at least, technology is a focus value point.
Yeah, I think.
So can, can you elaborate on that and?
I think.
What is this, I guess what I don't want us to be doing is, over here we're College Track or whatever, we're doing STEM. And over here with this consortium, we're doing technology and, and, and we're walking.
You know, so, so just so you know, we're talking again.
Oh, so we're saying, we're saying it more that we want to build the STEM, uh, within, you know, under the umbrella of our college prep, college track, uh, what we're doing. We want to build the STEM, we, we start with technology and, and, and.
And I, and I think what we're, we're also saying is that when we look at STEM, it's not a program outside. We want to look at how our science classes, are they quality science classes or are they rigorous? We don't have a ninth grade sci- science class.
Right.
So we don't have a ninth grade science class. When we're looking at pieces to compete, whether it's, uh, let's, let's, um, a career tech training after, after high school or UC or CSU, when you don't have a ninth grade, and the summer programs, our students don't qualify for a SMASH program, a COSMOS program. Sometimes the John, what's that, the John?
The John Apple.
No, not John. It'll come to me, but it's, but it's the talent search program, right, it's another John. There's another John program, but they don't, some of them, we have not been able to help those children qualify because they don't have a ninth grade science. So I'll call. So I'll call up, oh, we have great students that have four point O's, three point eights, three point zeros. They don't qualify because they do not, you all do not offer ninth grade science. So automatically, our whole school is knocked out. So when we talk about STEM, we're talking about Silicon Valley Math Initiative. How do we actually connect that to Common Core? How are we using the new generation science standards effectively? So our definition, and that's what I wanted to just clarify, of STEM mean, it doesn't mean another program. It means having these courses that we have science, our math courses, our algebra courses, our calculus courses, advanced trigonometry. What does that mean? Are they quality and rigorous courses and do children learn and can they compete with their high school, you know, colleagues around the state in order to get into college or even into programs? Because just, they may not necessarily be going to go to college, but they still have to compete for the programs they want to enter.
Let me ask you this, how, how feasible is it to maybe concentrate more on a STEM quote-unquote program at the K three level? And working our way up that way? Because I'm hearing, what I heard thus far is that we need to start at that level, you know?
Actually, I think I heard you help us, like we have a John, John saying that it's still in college-going culture. Literally, it should happen at the elementary school. So it would make more sense to me to flip it, to really focus heavily on college-going culture in elementary and as kids get older, get more and more STEM. And I really, I love this maker, the, the maker work that you're doing because, I mean, the, the kids that I saw that really engaged in, in your classes, where the kids who really were doing stuff with their hands and, you know.
So maybe a couple of several things. First of all, when I heard John talk about the idea of how do we, all the way through, especially starting young, help our children see how it's going to help them in life, and part of that is thinking about going to college. I think one of the things is to move away, it doesn't work to tell kids, oh, this is good for college. You know, that's the old just adults telling and it doesn't mean anything. How do we help them to experience it? So things like the Maker Ed can do that because you can start from kindergarten on through. That does have a STEM connection, but not all of it has to be STEM. Um, to go back to, was it Miguel who just asked that question about STEM K three? Well, we have been doing, we do more than most schools anywhere in terms of K three science. Uh, we actually are in discussion, but we're not quite clear on as we move forward with the K five science resource. Moving it so that that teacher does more directly with the science. But nevertheless, our, our teachers are doing science in, in K, K three. Okay. Uh, in fact, one of the things, as I've looked at the next generation science standards, we are farther ahead than almost any school district, probably in all of Alameda County, maybe all of California, except maybe a few private schools in terms of how we teach science because of the science notebook we're writing. We've been doing for over ten years. Um, and the hands-on approach and the inquiry approach. We are positioned to really then fold in these engineering strands that are going to start in kindergarten. So I'm going to be giving you some PD on what these next generation science standards are. But in terms of what Will was talking about, in terms of we need to bring in just the basic STEM into the high school. So what Anna Kretas said, we need a ninth grade science course. So when you looked through that list of fourteen things for A to G, it's, that is, you know, and what the universities, UC looks at, several times it was over and above the bare minimum. Well, the bare minimum for science is two years of lab science. But if you look at the, even the A to G, recommended three, our kids don't have three right now they can take. So not only do we not have ninth grade science, we don't have any kind of elective science for eleventh and twelfth graders. So we need to, we need another position in science. We're just going to lay it out there. We, we got ourselves reduced down to one, which is, there's a whole bunch of reasons why that's a problem. First one is for the kids, they don't have choices. Secondly, our teachers need somebody to collaborate with. Small as we are, at least the English teachers have another English teacher to talk to. The history teachers have another history teacher to talk to, at least there's two math teachers. Our science teacher is stuck there in a little cage rattling around and if she didn't have me to talk to, she'd have nobody.
Yeah, just for the board's information, science is a challenge for small school because of the nature of credentialing in science. You know, if you want to offer life science, physical science, you know, if those credentials are very specific in terms of what those teachers can teach. And if you only can offer two sections of life science or biology, it's hard to hire a teacher of sci- particularly in science, who's willing to come and just only teach two sections if you only have two sections available. So there's a little bit of a staffing challenge in the area of science because of the credential.
And so what we need to do is think creatively about the kinds of electives we can offer. And then to advertise for teachers who have dual credentialing in science. So either biology, physical science, or if they have the general science, they can teach any of the ninth grade courses or they can teach other courses at an introductory level, et cetera. But we do have to, we have to seek that, we have to have a program that we're seeking for. And that, then we seek people with those credentials. But this is a challenge. In fact, folks at the state need to clean that up, but it isn't going to happen tomorrow.
It's also, okay.
Yeah.
We've been struggling under the economics of this. And I think we're fortunate that after years of cutting, the state's finally putting money back into the schools. So, um, I think our, our other dilemma though is being so small. We've said for years that we have to be able to, this goes back to communications, is communicate what you've just said about the quality of our education. I, I don't know what it is you did with my daughter, I gotta say. She just, just won the school pie contest because she recited pie to the two hundred and sixty ninth edition.
Why'd you do that?
I think that was Mr. Rogers. So they got her started on that one. But, and, and she won't stop now until she gets into Caltech. But, so it does start young, but the stories aren't getting out there. And so unless the students come and then building the culture, and I think the school's done a great job with the sports teams. And I think building the, sort of, uh, the other piece of that for the non-sports kids that engage through, you know, robot building or, you know, whatever other, um, sort of STEM equivalents to sports for kids who might be good at one sport or, you know, so that we're getting a hundred and percent involvement in the after-school and then getting the word out there. So there's already a buzz in the street about the elementary school. We need to get a buzz out there and get that communications going. Uh, because at the end of the day, to be able to sustain enough teachers, if we don't have, if we have, you know, five students in the class, you know, we're, we're in good shape now with the state, but the next time the state gets a bump, then we're back in this, this crazy funding.
So regarding the funding, the conversation we had with John, with John Gooding. One of the things that if you think, I think about, I live right near Montero in Oakland, so it's one of the Hill schools. They have an annual fundraiser every year, a silent auction where they raise in one or two days a hundred thousand dollars. That pays for a music teacher or a Spanish teacher or whatever. So one of the things, yes, the budget from the state will not fund quite all the positions we ideally need in this tiny district. We keep hearing this, run Newmark, yeah, yeah, we get that, okay? But why not start talking to Eve in terms of the kind of big grants we need? But more importantly, from the business community, if they're willing to ante up, kick in sustainable funding to support one position over and above what we already have.
Because I think what, I think.
You know, start getting creative that way.
I think what businesses want is something different. What we need, we need people. We need positions, so when you talk about communication, someone has to do it, right? So why have we struggled for years and years? It's because we all are trying to take a little bitty piece of it and be the communicators. Whether it's Lisa, whether it's myself, whether it's Will, CJ, and all of us are taking a little bit of it to be those communicators. But I don't know if that's something that businesses, you know, now, and that's what I would like to have a conversation with, with John Gooding is, the things that we state, we want to have an after-school program, well, that's not just giving us donation for books. That means we need tutors. So you actually pay for people and I don't know if that's, if that's where the investment is. Or if that's the case, then what John stated earlier before, the fundraisers? So the fundraisers also gave grants to teachers, or they have the mini-grants. And that was very helpful, um, because it didn't necessarily go towards a specific thing, but it was a general pot that was used and then we were able to say, this is what we use it for and this is how I made an impact. So I think that's specific, that is really what, um, we need more funding from. And if we can't get that for businesses, then we have to identify what businesses are willing to do that we also can manage.
So I, can I just, can I just add? I think I've been, I've been a, an Enryville resident, so a recipient of the business community. I've been a student at Enryville, absolutely scholarships, internships, the whole thing is a little old, but it's still happening. So I know the will and the interest is definitely there. And now as a board member and, um, as a homeowner and, um, now an employee outside Enryville for another company who equally put money into communities and trying to find ways. I think it's, it's both the, they need the list of what that is, they need a person at the table during those conversations. We need that grant writer, I mean, these are those key things. We, you know, the part of it is that when the business has their own idea and concept and story about this district, they don't, it's because they don't have access or for whatever reason. And information, there's been no exchange of information, there's been no examples, there's been, you know, they have, they hire students. We did hire students all the time, I saw one last week, I went to a movie. I mean, so there are some connections, but part of it is that there's not the, you know, there has not been, you know, there's been gaps. And so this is our opportunity to fill those gaps and to really do it in a strategic way that gets us that specific, you know, um, that, that very, that fundraiser. Well, Philip, work on that fundraiser. I mean, you know, I mean, that, these are all new opportunities and I think, you know, why not invest? And I, and I say, you have a list, you just came up with one that's a solid one, we know STEM or excuse me, just science ed in, in general is a missing component. And the partial tax is only going to pay for so much and it has so many things. And there's a wellness piece, I mean, there's all these different things. But I think we just have to be, as a district, be more, um, uh, able to articulate what those needs are, whether they're ugly or not, and make sure that they're communicated often and, you know, so that information happens.
Can I, can I just amplify something you, you said? Because this board just approved.
Yeah.
Funding that's going to be matched by the city for a joint fundraiser to do exactly this grant writer. And that, that grant writer, and I think that the dilemma with that grant writer position is this topic that we're here for today, which is to get crystal clear about what it is, what our priorities are for grant writing. Because there's an infinite number of grants and if we just chase whatever grant is out there, sure, we'll get the money, but it's going to happen one year and that's it.
That's where I have to focus.
And what's, what's really critical is not to, not to write a grant for every grant that's out there, but to, to say, as you, if we say, if we come out of this room today saying, okay, ninth grade science teacher, that's what we'll write grants for. Or music, you know, for many years it was the music teacher. And quite frankly, I'm thankful for that. Um, but we have to set that course and then we can't waver. And so I, I have to say this as the outgoing guy, I'll come back and say something if I see waver.
Now you can make public comments.
Now I get to become the public comment.
But I do have, I have to just kind of validate what Carol said. I think that Annie Yates is doing an excellent job with science.
Absolutely.
When we brought guests through the science center there, they've always been very impressed with. And, you know, when you look at the, when you look at what's happening with science at elementary schools generally across the state, not a lot's happening, quite honestly. So I mean, I think that our kids at Annie's are really getting a good foundation in science. But I think the dilemma is when you have a small secondary school, it's the staffing issue. I'm, what I'm hearing is kind of a planning for the future regarding offering more science electives, which could then help with the credentialing issue. Because like I'm saying, you can't put out a forty percent science position. If you can put a full-time science position out there and have somebody that can offer multiple different science classes, you can really enrich the science program at the secondary already. If you can't offer the class, we can talk about all this stuff, but it's not going to make a difference because kids don't have access to it, right?
And the other thing is get a little creative about how you define positions. So it might be that even with electives, we really have only enough for one point six or one point eight science teacher. But if we did electives like Maker Ed or if we do the kinds of things that is needed is supervision of interns. And I've actually done that kind of job before where both the employer who's got an intern and the intern need guidance on how to handle that. You could make two-tenths or four-tenths of a position be some of that work or some of the intervention work. So that's the other thing is can we get creative about how we do these positions? And maybe getting funding for some of that special part of it. Um, so just some thoughts.
Do they have other stuff that they?
Yeah, but Philip just wanted to make one, I think he just wanted to hit and then mark.
So, um, I think what's going to be key is definitely the development director. So not only are they a grant writer, and that's why I was strategic and key in using the term development director, because that's why the position is paying more. Of course, we need to be competitive in securing it because so many people are, uh, so many companies or nonprofits are hiring development directors right now to fundraise. This person can write grants, federal, state, regular foundation grants, but also secure corporate sponsorships. We also want the events piece, which we're going back to Carol, and I did, I have pushed for an event, um, at the Ed Fund, but the board did not feel at this time, or this was actually last year, that we were ready to move in that direction just yet. So I do want to make that clear. But I think everyone, the, the, the position that we're going in now, this is a first that I, as executive director, the president of the Ed Fund have been at a board retreat. So I think the, we are stepping out in the right direction. I think that once we are, once we do secure a development director, this person will be key in contacting the individuals for these specific programs. Whatever your strategic plan is or, or specific programs that you want us to go after, that grant writer, you'll have to pick specific, you know, three specific programs or whatever, and that person will go after those specific grants. Uh, but that person will be key in the reporting of it. So when they're reporting, they're compiling and giving the narrative of what this, what the accomplishments are of these programs. But we can take the narrative that this person compiles and we can produce reports to the public and communication pieces. Because we, we haven't done it in a while, but we have our monthly newsletter that we send out, even to the school district and to the public. We have about probably three or four thousand people that's on that list. And, um, but it's the, the issue of who's going to be the individual, uh, which I don't think we all are prepared to discuss or you all are prepared to discuss at this point, uh, whether it's going to be a new person or whether it's going to be on somebody's plate that's already here. But that's going to be key, whether it's going to be strategic as far as each principal, um, getting a few reports from the, uh, teachers and then sort of filtering out and then putting it up to whomever the superintendent and them passing it along to me. And that's every other month or quarterly. But I think there needs to be a who, a what, and when. Because otherwise, we're just going through the motions. Um, uh, because I want us to move forward and then that way I can have a communication plan on our end to give to the public or to give to the John Goodings and they can discuss with Barbara Lee and the city manager with the kind of new companies that are coming to town. But, um, we need to think strategically of how this is going to be communicated, not only to us, but to the public. Um, and of course, the develop, development director is an option where we can frame that. Because I know we don't have everybody's full, uh, their, their workload, so I just wanted to add that piece. And also about the foundations, so whether, whichever thrust you all, you, you all pick, foundations, there are so many foundations out there. there are so many foundations out there, the key part is building the relationship, and that development director and myself will be looking at strategic people that have relationships with these foundations, whether it be two or three of us going there, but it's all about building relationships. So there's opportunity there, it's just depending on which specific area you all choose, and when donors do contact me a few, they, they're not too concerned about STEM or college prep, they're concerned at the end of the day, are they going to college, are they, what's the API score, how the test score, so they're not, but I think the main point is that we, we pick a thrust, stick to it, and do it well. That's the main point. And then we can go from there, and then we'll be successful.
I don't know if it's getting too deep into weeds, but John mentioned the difficulty of going out for a position that may be forty percent of a position, and I don't know how, I don't know sharing a teacher between an elementary school and funding for the twenty percent or forty percent for a biology teacher in the ninth grade, if that's a possibility or not, and that, and maybe that's just a question for cabinet later on. But I don't know if that would work, I think Carol would.
For science, I don't see.
Part of it is because the higher level science courses typically require a single subject credential, which restricts them, you know, they have general science, they can teach in the ninth grade, right?
Yeah.
K nine, but, and when you get to the tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade type of science classes, usually require a single subject credential, which doesn't want us to teach in elementary school.
And even the six, seven, eight teachers that we have right now are multiple-such teachers, and so they don't have what it takes to teach even ninth grade, and even if on paper they could, they couldn't do it as well, because they haven't, it's, it's a different animal to teach high school.
As far as the science teacher's concerned, if we did hire two full-time science teachers, maybe one, a science teacher in each specific field, so far you have biology, chemistry, and physics. For example, if we hire a biology teacher, have that life science credential, where many schools are offering biology, of course, advanced biology, microbiology, anatomy, physiology, a combination thereof, that's like five different, perhaps right there, that can be useful with that one teacher. With chemistry, the same thing, you know, for chemistry, maybe forensic science, a specialized chemistry science, that teacher can fulfill all of those, and pretty much solve your problem on multiple levels, not only if you have two teachers, but you have multiple subjects that you can now offer, especially when you see Doorways list of courses that are advertised out there to the parent, believe it or not, any and many, many parents are becoming more familiar with the UC Doorway site that lists what courses we offer at our high school.
Ask this question, um, to Will. So, you know, based on us wanting to go through this college prep model for us, is, is there a strategy to really increase the collaboration with Paralta Community College, or the Berkeley City College, to increase our courses from two to four or five, you know, throughout the year? How are we going to, you know, how are we going to bring that collaboration together where we can able, where we're able to do that?
Right now, John Quinn and Ms. Allen are actually with Berkeley City College to figure out what is the best way for us to make that happen. Like I said, we already have the plan with Berkeley City College, I believe, we had a discussion about extending it off to Langley College as well, but just figuring out so we can have different offerings for our students as they are going, but right now, what we're trying to do is get it where Berkeley City College can offer either the teachers to come to our campus, or figuring out what teachers we have that have master's degrees that will be able to actually teach those courses on our campus.
The other thing, Miguel, is, and I don't think this has changed, but the community colleges have a cap law in current enrollment, in terms of the ability for them to generate funds, so as long as they're not for cap, they'll, they'll be willing to offer more classes, but we ran up against that my last year here, because I think we're offering three or four Berkeley Community College classes, the problem was that they, you know, the president always isn't aware of this, but then when he gets down to the next level of staff, they're saying, you know, this is beyond our cap, so therefore, there's a cost to us, and I think that you're, we had to pay like ten thousand dollars.
She did talk about that, she talked about the cap, there's every school, doesn't matter what college, you have a cap that you can have kids enroll in. So whether the classes are on campus, or they're taking the courses, we can only have so many students participate.
So have we come up with a strategy for the next semester, for the fall, as far as courses and classes? Because, John, to your point, they actually, Paralta Community College actually passed the partial test, that kind of increased that cap.
No, not a cap, but that's a cap. It increases the funding, but it doesn't increase the number of students, so.
Well, you can contract with them.
So we do contract with.
If you pay for them, if you pay for the instructor, there will be to do that, because it doesn't interfere with their concurrent enrollment cap, and the costs for their instructors are typically less than it would be if we had a.
And I think CJ can talk about, so he, so CJ basically talks, speaks with Francine, who's the, the A's on between the professors, and who teaches, so he can talk a little bit about that, because we'll, or we go on diff, you know, we communicate at a different level, so I think he can talk about what, what does that look like when we're trying to get professors to teach.
So currently, we, Francine is the person that we deal with, and she goes out, we off, we actually put on the table what courses we're interested in. Francie will in turn let him know what departments are willing to work with high schools. Believe it or not, some, some departments are kind of shy about working with high schools, because there's so much work that is involved in that, a lot of the teachers, believe it or not, frankly speaking, have left the high school to go work at a community college, because they wanted to leave the high school, they don't want to come back, okay? So currently, we have a fabulous English teacher who works for Paralta Community College, and works with our students as well, and works with some other schools downtown. So our English has covered communications, we have now a teacher in communications, she's able to teach several subjects and bring that to our table. We even have music departments working with us, we had in the past, American Sign Language Department working with us as well. So right now, currently, me and Francie are discussing next year, next semester's courses. So far, we know that we're going to have an English course. The next course is what we're discussing now, is it going to be another communication course, will it be a music course, will it be a film course, we're discussing that right now. So as we finish, she has to secure the department, the teacher over on there, and believe it or not, there are only a certain amount of classes they can teach, and that they are funded to teach. Each teacher has a certain amount of, I believe it's FDE, that they can teach for the school year at the Paralta Community College, so they have to work all that together, along with our schedule. Our scheduling, many times, does not coincide with the Paralta schedule, so we have to be creative in that. All that put together, we're working, so, so far we know we are offering English, and I suspect we're going to offer a ton of communication.
Because this is, I mean, the reason why I ask, because if we're going to move towards that thrust, I would just think that Paralta Community College is a major player in, in, in accomplishing this. And, you know, just for me personally, I mean, we've been in this relationship for about four or five years, and, you know, based on all those variables that you're talking about, you know, I would just hope that we could get, start receiving more classes from them, to give our students more advanced placement, to get to that, that one year of college, you know, after they're either a junior or, you know, a senior. And I know at the pace where, where we're at right now, that, you know, our students won't be able to, you know, have those credits, you know, coming out of, over such.
Well, another challenge is definitely the, our location, bringing the teachers onto our campus, we only have so many classes, and we definitely need to make sure that we have the technology available for the teachers to use inside the classroom. The other thing is having the teachers, of course, we do have some teachers at the high school level with master's degrees, and they would need to go through the hiring process at Paralta Community College. So far, I am, been, I have been counselor, not only at Emory for several years, everybody knows, but I'm also, I'm also a counselor at Berkeley City College as well, so I too will be teaching courses for our high school students. The challenge there is, I'll be teaching it here on the Emory campus, or I'll be teaching that course on the Paralta Community College campus, preferably BCC. That too, we have to be very careful with this, our teach, our students really, really, really need to leave home, they need to leave Emory and go to, and have that experience on a college campus. Is that great, teaching them on our school, but it's something about.
Different experience.
Exactly, something about leaving home and going to have that experience somewhere else, that's being, very much, you need to see that.
I think what CJ said about the challenge of, you know, when the departments look for teachers who are willing to teach high school kids, we had, I think the first year when we brought them on, we had a very popular class, our students wanted to take digital arts.
Yes.
Very popular, kids want to sign up for that? The teacher really couldn't connect with high school kids very well, so what was potentially a real positive experience for our students really kind of ended up being not so positive. And so I know that one of the things that BCC has learned is that while they're interested in offering the classes, it's going to be based upon the faculty they have, and the ability of the faculty to really connect with high school kids.
I think that's one of the reasons why, if they can go to the college campus, even though there's logistics around that, the kids are around, and college students, and they see a different affect, and they stop acting like high school kids.
We probably think about a bus.
We have a bus, so, so this is a great, this is a great in the weeds conversation. Well, well, it's not so much, because if we're talking about the thrust, we need to know the, the challenges that staff has had.
Okay.
And I'm here, and that was perfect, CJ, I needed to hear that.
And I, and I, and I think this has been a great conversation to direct, but I, I am concerned about hearing the, the full presentation, and, and I'm also concerned about, as about to be a member of the public, on the other side of the dais, finding ways that, the really amazing things you're talking about that are getting done, and we talk so much about our deficits, and about what we don't have, and I, as a member of the public, I'll be looking at, what, what are we doing right? And, and this conversation brought out so many amazing things implicit, that the exact right conversations are happening, about what could happen, the great work that's being done, but it's, it's a, it's the sound of a tree falling in the forest, does, does the tree really exist, because we don't hear the sound? And, and the, the funders and the public and the voters, and the parents and the kids considering going to the school aren't interested, because they never hear about this stuff. So I, I'm just looking for, as we go on to what our themes are, as we pick, pick our thrust, to find ways to get these stories out.
So, yeah, so basically, I think that is, so when I stated with the PowerPoint, I just wanted to stop there, because this was for an evening presentation, which I would have delivered differently. And so, however, because it's a study session, and I can bring in staff members who can have, tell you the story, really, that's what we're boiling down to. We want to propose, and we recommend that we have a thrust of college prep. What our goal is, and our job is, is to go back and actually prepare for that. So when we have conversations with our teachers, our teachers don't question us anymore, what is our focus, what's our initiative, what's that? We can say, this is what it is, and this is what it means, to make sure that we have students who are, who are college-ready, from kindergarten through twelfth grade. So if that means some of the college, college work, if it means some of the STEM, enhancing STEM, which means just basically having some good, solid foundations in science and mathematics, if it means that we need to do some more intervention for students, and we need to have support systems, that's, that's what we want to go back and be able to plan for.
And this is what I need as a board member to do, you know, as CJ just done, I need to know what those challenges are, you know, to prevent you from getting to where you want to go. Because as a board member, if I can hear those, what those challenges are, then maybe I can help support.
And the successes.
Right, right, I mean, I'm good with the successes, I want to hear that as well, but as we move towards what staff wants, you know, or the direction that the board is giving, to support you, you know, in getting there, you know, I need to know what those challenges are.
Josh, maybe part of the response to your question, really, is that maybe that I'll be the major focus.
That's it.
And, and I, you know, I want to.
Stories out there, create a strategy.
But I think, to redress, remember Dwayne, I think we have to think about what protocol is. So there's a diff, so, there's a difference when we say we have an issue, okay, let me help you all go out and, and solve that, which would be more of a committee response. So there's a difference in terms of you all as a board, in terms of how you want to engage, so there's more of a committee response, meaning that I can kind of, I can kind of pull up my sleeves, and I can get in, and I can help you all out. Versus at a ward space, there's a different message that I would send at a board meeting, which wouldn't be necessarily the details, because my expectation is not for you, as a board member, necessarily to roll your sleeves and get into, you know, the details. It's more, this is what we do, but we need the ti, time to, and I think we have to, we have to find the time to actually, that's why we want a thrust, to map out and say, this is what we're focusing on year one, year two, year three. So those are some of the things that you all can also think about, there's a, and I don't think that we're staying no to anything, it's more of what's the protocol. So, and it's sometimes challenging in terms of, because when we present at a board meeting, our goal is you all focus on policy, focus on direction, focus on, okay, this, how does it, how is budget, how was, there's budget in place, but we also have board members who are very hands-on and who love to help, so that would be more in the committee piece. And, and I think just to, just to, yeah, like a retreat, just, and so, there's certain spaces and places to have that conversation, and so I think, remember when, the, finding out, you know, why doesn't this happen when I don't see it, you know, at this level is very helpful, but sometimes you may not see it at a board meeting.
But that's fine.
Yeah, do you understand it? Because we're presenting based on what you all do as a board, in terms of policy, budget, et cetera, but it may be something where you want to hear more about parents, so coming to, you know, a, a specific meeting or committee is helpful, but just understanding, that's why sometimes you don't hear certain pieces, certain places, because we're very cognizant of what that space is, is for.
Yes. To get us, to get us back on the thrust conversation. I, I, I am supportive of college prep, I think a, a steam thrust where we are right now, one A P course, not a ninth grade science class, I think it's too ambitious. I think your presentation of the fourteen points of what you see is looking for, really excellent, and really helped me focus, to see some of those gaps, that, that, and they're looking for, you know, what did you do beyond the bare minimum? That's kind of what I took away from that. Where did, where did you go broader, like as your senior year, and do more than just the, the fourteen courses or the, and three of them are about where did you go deeper? What special project did you do, what special curriculum? So, yeah, the internships, the mentoring, the tutoring, the support, having a robust science program, I think, I think that all comes through from what we did at the base. I asked about the technology STEM thing, because I do think, my bias, and you've heard me say it in the curriculum, is that we should have a college prep plus focus, and the plus is technology, it is tech, it is computer literacy for our students. We're here so close to Silicon Valley, there are, there, talk about grant fundraising opportunity, but we're in a town with the, the world's greatest computer animation company. We're, you know, is Leapfrog still here?
Yes. Expressions.
Expressions, we've got tremendous art, resources that we can tap. Expressions, we've got tremendous art, uh, resources that we can tap into and brand ourselves and market and communicate ourselves around that, that kind of a focus. And I, I don't know if all of you have been listening to NPR this week. KQBD, four-part series on how coding, computer coding, is becoming a new required need in K-12 curriculum. And there's a bill in the legislature this year to do that. So we ought to be, we're small enough, we can focus on that. I think, I think STEAM or STEM right now is, is too big and too many other people are doing it. Um, and we're not like there, or we can jump right to that. I think we should develop towards there. But I think we did a college prep plus technology focus, that that, that should be the, the direction of going in. And we're already sort of building that through this consortium, I guess. So when we're talking to Peralta, it, you know, what, what can they do to support, you know, is there a computer coding class? The digital arts? I mean, that's a, that's a, you know, those are the things that in addition, we should, we should be looking for. And I, and I do agree with Carol that, that we need to have, um, we need to have the strong, strong enough foundation in terms of our, our science and our math that we're, we're doing it. And I think we are doing it at the elementary schools, one of my son's favorite subjects. And I think we need to be stronger in terms of science and other math.
In terms of sorting, they, they have the management to actually contact businesses. So whoever the person is who will contact businesses, I've told them that I have to connect them with Philip because they have, they already plan to do that. So they plan to contact businesses in here in Emoryville, um, to build that A, A, I, A, E, A, A core.
But this is my concern, I don't, you know, my concern is someone from Contra Costa County calling up Emeryville businesses, giving us just a little slitter of the pie, and Wisconsin Contra Costa is getting their everything, getting all our resources. So, I mean, I know it's catching me to-
It's a thought to throw out there.
Right.
I think it's one way we go after it.
And it's happening.
We gotta go after with our-
Exactly, exactly.
Certain kind of talking, uh-
Right.
Google.
Right.
Google has a, by the way, if all of you listening, five hundred twenty-one nonprofits in the Bay Area are going to get five hundred thousand dollar grants from Google. Applications due March thirtieth?
Twenty-sixth.
It's a very short application. It's like four questions, two hundred words each.
It's an innovation grant, innovations in, in technology and learning.
Yeah.
Philip, I might be able to connect to someone.
But John, to your point about the thrust, I think, I mean, for me, I think that's the ideal way to go. You know, college prep with, with a plus, technology, science, and let's just, let's just stick with that initiative and let's just move forward.
So, um, I, I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate the work because I think, um, part of it is, and I'll, you know, I'm on video, I know over here, but, um, you know, part of it is I, I felt we've been derailed for a bit of time. And I think, um, these are not things that have not been, you know, discussed at points in times. They've been called many different things, or there was nothing. And so, um, I just want to appreciate, you know, my two board members to bring it up and, um, really push because it's timely as we talked about LCFF funding and L cap. But to make sure that as a community, we understand, you know, that either we were derailed or, um, nothing was said, or whatever, but, um, making sure that we're all on the same page because essentially that's what we need to be. And just that point about why I had to write down, just as a board member, a community member, I think, um, and some of us eventually will be parents on this board probably, maybe, unless they retire as parents. But, um, but I think part of the challenge is, um, making sure that, um, you use us more than, you know, I, I think we all honestly, at this point, I am so not policy and procedure board member anymore. I mean, I'm not, I, I just, I, I'm an alum, I'm a proud member of this team and part of this district. And so, um, use us however way, you know, if you need us, if you have somebody who knows somebody, use that person. I mean, you, you really do have the opportunity to really tap into resources that, um, ultimately we probably try to figure out how do we plug in, you know? But definitely, if there's, if you feel like that communication about a challenge, a particular challenge in terms of protocol, we need to make, create the opportunity so that you can, you know, communicate that to the board or the board member, whomever. But I think, um, today's conversation was incredibly timely, even with one board member exiting after Wednesday. But, um, uh, but we know we have a, a past friend, a long-time friend forever. But I think, you know, it's really key to have us all going in the right direction. And I'm about going forward, not thinking about what's backwards, but I'm just acknowledging that we were, you know, off track.
And I'll say from the board perspective, what our responsibility has to be after today is when we hire our new, our new superintendent, we stick with what the thrust is of today. And we don't allow the direction to move in another direction based on what the agreement or what the, or what the direction is today.
I think that's the purpose of today's meeting, is to set that direction so that the person we hire has their marching orders and will be evaluated on whether or not they're going in the direction. I think, um, Deborah, that's, that we've all agreed on.
Candidates will also look at the fact that we've chosen this and, and know if that's something that they want to jump in on. Like, ooh, I'm really interested in that for us, yeah.
Right.
Because if they're, if they're a smart candidate, they're going to be reading the notes of our meetings and definitely of, of their treat, what have you. So they're going to say, oh, the board is a hundred percent on, you know, on the right track with staff and I want, I want to be a part of that.
Yeah, I know. I want to commend staff for the work on this because it's like, I was here yesterday, but it's like, you know, because this really defines what the district is about, this is what Anna Green was talking about, you know? Tired of people, you know, when people ask, what is Emory about? This really describes, I mean, this is as good as what I've seen us have in terms of really being clear about this is the direction of going. So I want to commend staff for all that backroom work on trying to, to work this out. I think it's a very positive direction.
And the reason why I wanted to make that point for the board is because I've heard staff say with each leader come in, you know, the thrust changes, so-
Or call something else.
Right, or call something else, exactly. So it'd be incumbent on us to make sure the next person comes in and know the direction that the board is.
So only just from the, um, you got used to it already, I, I watched it and it didn't work out. But, um, but, um, the only, only thing, you know, I, I just have to say, top, community and school, I, I'm like a huge cheerleader at this point, probably probably walking seminars or whatever. But, um, the community school end of it, I think in terms of, um, in a community district, really, I mean, that's where we're going. It's not two schools in districts, um, broader. But, um, how, how does that, and I know, I know it doesn't change what we're talking about, but in terms of an identity piece, I would like to see us be more thoughtful about identifying ourselves and such. Um, and I, and I think, you know, we have a couple of years where we're physically located, you know, in similar, on the same campus. But, um, I think that needs to be something we're talking about louder, you know, not just saying, oh, it's going to happen, but we need to start really, um, uh, having that discussion or that information exchange or something because, um, opportunity through city schools or somewhere, but there needs to be more awareness about it. And I don't think, um, we're going to get the support we need from a financial standpoint as well if we're not doing that as well. Because I think there was a position for community, uh, liaison, or was that, was that what it was like that?
Via the child, um, children's A society.
A society that was, which makes a lot of sense, we need to fundraise for, you know, but, um, but that's, you know, how do we, you know, really anchor that message in if we're not talking about being it or, you know, getting kind of poised or, you know, to do it? So I just wanted to offer that as-
We are a full-service community school with a college prep technology thrust.
Always, you know, you always artificially put those things together and you got to write it down. Put it on our list, that's good. Okay.
That was it.
All right.
I mean, you know, tying in to these other community benefit agencies and these other governmental agencies.
Because that only arms us all indefinitely from that end of it, so.
Actually, the board's commitment to this could really assist in the development of all the programming for the community center.
That's your idea?
And to, to a large extent, the thrust of the, the, um, college prep and the technology plus is the core of, of the identity. And the prevailing strategic approach is through a community school and those kind of support services. That's, that's really what it is. And so what do we need? One of the things that I was going to say is that I appreciate that the opportunity at this retreat for the board to really hear, what does it take and why has it been so difficult that it's not for lack of really not just hard work, but quality work on the part of staff? But my God, being more spread thin. And so we can work on this funding approach to how we shore that up and for you to understand, wow, this is what we need. I mean, that's been very valuable.
Well, I add to, Brad, you need to mention to the concept of full-service community schools because in the typical model, even from the national coalition, the educational component is not something that is really emphasized as much. You know, it's about bringing agents, social services, and all these personal kinds of services, which are important, but you're really kind of building in, we're talking about integrating a really critical educational focus to this whole concept of full-service community school, which in, in a community like this, when you have the kind of, you know, companies that John was talking about that are willing to support it, I like what John said about, you know, the whole focus being continuing to generate support within a full-service community school model that integrates as a key component, the educational piece.
Well, that's a college prep technology thrust is the one, that's where we're going to. The full-service community school is the how we're going to.
Yeah, because, I mean, Carol just mentioned it, but it was also mentioned in the presentation for children. They decided that community schools is a strategy, that program is a, is a strategy and is a framework.
So, so now, I, I guess, you know, thinking out loud, how does the budget work with all of this?
Well, that's why we're having a L cap conversation, right? We have to see, but now we have some clearer priorities. Do we need that science teacher at the high school? You know, what kind of, uh, you know, support do we need at the, at the elementary? What kind of administrative support might we need at the?
And what do we need, what don't we have the money for that we need Philip? And, you know, our- So how does the budget, how does the budget provide us the ability to do this?
So, and I'll just add to that is parcel tax dollars. I mean, it's all, all buckets, you know, how do all the buckets kind of fund this? Because that's a little different from L cap because L cap budgeting is different than it's all the other buckets. But how do they all, I mean, not that they have to be different, but it's not that they have to be different.
Should and allows us to put it all on one hit.
So I think it's we-
And that's what we want to do. I don't think we want to say, this is our state LCFF model, we want to say this is federal, this is our parcel tax. This is our remaining category, this is, this is how we're going to put it all together to drive this. The whole vision should be in the L cap.
So the whole vision is to go up there.
Right, so, so what, so what I'm hearing John say, this college prep model should be in the L cap plan.
Oh, yeah.
And then the budget will wrap around the L cap plan, which will include all of this and maybe a little bit more.
Yeah, so we have conversations with our various constituents or our, um, you know, groups that we represent, then we know where the focus is. So we're able to facilitate some of those conversations based on this is the direction from the board. And so I think when you hear, um, the reports from myself, Mar, other staff members, then you start to see how that will shape up because having groups categorized and stating what the high leverage is, is based on what the data states. I mean, and the data, what we're using is data in terms of, or the lack of data. That's another issue of that, in order to be a data-driven district, we need to have clean data. So that'll be, not today, because I just have to go, that's another challenge that I'll, that I'll describe. But, uh, but when you want to be, we want to be a data-driven district so that the data will state what the needs are so when the plan will reflect that and the budget will reflect that.
That's very helpful. So is, is there, are there questions, um, any other comments to add to this particular development?
So, no, just, just, that's my question. A process question, since this is a study session. Does the board need staff to bring back to the board at some point some type of formal action item for the board to adopt the essence of those?
I was hoping, I thought that was actually-
Or will the direction come out of the study session? So it's a more process question.
I think, I think we get a formal statement.
Yeah, I, I didn't think this was, I thought this was just a study session and then it was going to come back there.
I mean, I think staff, based on what we're hearing from board members, could probably formulate some kind of action item for the board to adopt so that the direction of the board is clear.
Right. And it's public. But I want to make, i- i- is there, I heard from the yell, agreement about the plus, college prep plus technology? Is that?
I'm in the same community you are.
Yeah, you've heard me make that.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. I mean, we guys can discuss anything that's curriculum.
I see I, kid, nine, I see people, yeah.
So the curriculum committee-
Is staff, does the staff, do, do that, that fits and doesn't, does it, uh?
No, that is, that's what we've been talking about for a while. And that's, that's exactly why we have all the new classes and technology.
So, so, uh, I was- So would this presentation would come back to the board?
So I made two recommendations to staff. One is to, um, and, and we'll stick it down through the curriculum, to, uh, you know, develop whatever the resolution languages that we want to formally present to the board that captures what we're talking about. The, the second one, and that is a somewhat longer term, but not long term, uh, is what, and maybe it's part of the L cap, but, uh, no, no, it seems like we need, okay, what are the steps then? What are we missing to, to implement a college prep technology?
Challenges.
What's that?
In my mind, that's an ongoing thing. There will be, like, the L cap will be a first step.
Yeah.
And then as we identify and develop programs, it will be a continuous thing.
I just want some, I guess, some, some concrete stuff, so, so immediate, yeah. So you're saying ninth grades, okay.
Yeah.
We've heard, uh, a, you know, dedicated, full-time computer, um, what's the position at the elementary school? Computer lab, teacher, um, instructor.
Full-time instructor.
Yeah, and, you know, and, I mean, what, what are we doing? I think it does mean what are we doing K-12, especially with smarter balance coming up with computer testing? What are we doing to get our kids computer literate, uh, both typing, but also, you know?
So basically, yeah.
Information stuff in, in K-8.
I think what I was-
High school, so it seems like they're-
Because you know that, that-
It has curriculum implication.
It does, I just want to make sure it's not another plan, one of us is writing. But I think what, I think what it is, and it can be part of the L cap, is basically what's a needs assessment. So if this is where we want to be, then what is the needs assessment and what is the data we play?
And I'm also kind of as an add-on to that, I'm hearing John say, what are the first five things we need to do?
Right.
In concrete terms.
To, to, to ramp up our curricular offerings, to deliver, get us on this K-12 college prep tech approach.
And we do want to, I mean, I think the, the, the thing we have to think about all night and think about the responsibility of this board is to, yes, we, we, we're going this route, we have to check in. We have to know, you know, did we hit those top five? I mean, we need to be very good about keeping ourselves, you know, there.
And we're going to hear other things that, that, you know, that are going to be somewhat peripheral, but, you know? Yeah, we're going to, we want new teachers or, um, or-
Well, I was just going to, I was just going to say, there may have to be radical changes to our current program that, to accommodate some of those five things that we want. And which, which will affect personnel, which will- And which, which will affect personnel, which will affect program, other programs. So, as we move forward, you know, cabinet's gonna have to address those five issues. But there, we need to be prepared for radical change to what we have right now. So, there's, there's limited resources. More money is coming in, granted, but we still have to address our thrust, our focus, and the way to get there, there may have to be some radical changes to what we have now.
Which includes looking at how current parcel tax monies are allocated, I understand.
Right. Well, hey, I mean, I think we're at the point now where we have to make radical changes if we're gonna take this difficulty to the next level. So, I mean, I'm prepared to make those changes if it means moving toward this thrust.
Yeah, we might wanna try to use the word radical.
I mean, the way I think of it. It's still framed by which we're gonna build strategic planning. And that includes what we do with the budget, you know. But it's not, oh, we gotta do radical change, but.
We wanna be bold. But it, it will be a conversation. John's exactly right. I wanna know what the five things are. And then we will look what the competing priorities are. And it may be that, you know, we, we need to do more on parent engagement. That, that, that is in support of this program. But we'll have to say, okay, we can't do one of these five things off the list cause this parent engagement piece is really important and foundational. That piece goes to Philip. And that's the piece we're gonna fundraise for. But, but we gotta know what are the five things.
Called strategic planning.
Exactly.
Just in terms of, again, process, so the Soup Nets Curriculum Committee's meeting next week in front of your regular board meeting. And I kind of heard maybe that the conversation to frame, um, a board action item, that that conversation could be followed up on during that curriculum meeting. Will you be able to attend that meeting? So, that probably would be the agenda. I think Mr. Quinn needs to, at least if you can let John.
Well, Ann agreed to run those meetings.
He comes, but he'll be there. So, once they're right there, he'll be there.
What, what time is it? Five o'clock.
Five fifteen.
Each four minutes, four, right?
Five fifteen. No, that's great. That's a great follow-up. Thank you for that. So, um, we, we actually have, so thank you staff members that were present as well. Unless you wanna link to the board protocol, we can probably take a five-minute, um, please, that would be, that works. So, this is just to, um, I don't have right now.
I'm not opposed to discussing this today, but it just seem, okay. But it seemed like this is a good discussion for when we have Mr. Simon's replacing on board.
This is really quick. And, um, it'll be more like telling that person.
Tell them how it is.
How it is. So, um, there was, there was one, it's really literally, there's only one issue here. I wanted to make sure it was on the agenda. Um, so we have the full document. We have had a previous practice of bringing items multiple times to the board, um, prior to its adoption or, um, a vote. And so, um, we have made a considerable shift as it relates to ECL. So, um, there, we've already talked about a protocol or a way of working in terms of being sensitive to the timeline, et cetera. But I wanted to offer again this, um, question of, um, do we require every adoption to require a first and a second reading? The issue here is that we have agendas that are jam-packed normally. And a lot of it is because I, one, we did not, um, uh, we want to have two readings or more. And, um, some, we should absolutely. They require public hearing, a lot, you know, a larger conversation around the table or, you know, in public, which absolutely makes sense. But there are some things that, um, we're doing now just because we've always done it. And so, just to kind of address the just because we've always done it, um, I just wanted to raise that to the board and have that quick discussion about should every item be, um, brought more than once? Because that's where some staff isn't able to execute and do things in a timely manner. And the agenda has to always have this document or whatever it is come back and forth. If things are legitimately incorrect, makes sense. But I just wanna, you know, throw back questions to the board and see what your thoughts were around it. But as I said, the new person, we just can tell them how it is.
My, I mean, my thought is that I, I like the, the, uh, the practice of it coming twice. And that, um, it gives more time for consideration and, you know, makes less room for error. Where, you know, see it a second time. And I, I guess I haven't observed, uh, rigidity on, on the board's part when it comes to, your staff tells us, you know, we did for a whole subject on ECL, but, but other things, there's kind of need to do something. So, I would think if we were to change this policy, we might make the, uh, the standard for moving it, you know, on the spot to a one-time, maybe, uh, less stringent. I think right now the standard is like a hundred B C or something.
So, this is the thing, we don't even have a policy per se. It's just, it's just been a way of doing. And so, that way of doing.
Mr. Simon always cites urgency matter, but.
Cause Josh been here so long, it's become policy. I mean, you know, it's just a way of doing.
It's in our, it's in our policies.
You seen it? We have seen, I have seen.
Urgency items on the agenda under.
You mean, oh, you mean two readings is not independent of the policy.
It's nowhere on policy.
Two reads under policy.
It's just practice.
And it was taken. I'm sorry, because we were, um, under change. I forgot the.
State receivership.
State receivership. So, there was some, um, I'm not saying that there should be a lack of caution or, you know, awareness. But I think we had so much going on, that's probably where it started, you know, initially started. It's not to say it's not, it's a bad practice. We just need to be thoughtful that we have so much going on. Should everything coming before us come twice?
Well, let me ask you this. Are all contracts coming to the board, period? Even, even those contracts that are less than fifteen thousand dollars?
No.
They're not? So, I would be willing to kind of accommodate what the president is saying. If all contracts come to the board, um, if nothing less on consent calendars, you know, those items that are fifteen thousand or less, if they can be put on consent calendar, so we can at least see the contracts that are being entered into by the district.
But I wouldn't let them to, to be held up. I mean, often those are.
No, it's not, it's not hold up. I mean, they can already be approved. Right. They can, for those that are fifteen thousand or less, they can al-.
It just has an information like.
Right. Bring them back, right. Bring them back somehow. On a ratification list or something.
So, but can I jump in for a minute? So, the ratification list was all about taking the burden of not putting the contracts before the board for, for, for approval. The threshold is eighty-four thousand, is eighty-three thousand four hundred. That's the threshold. So, between fifteen thousand and eighty-three, four, those are the contracts that you see on the ratification list. Which is on consent. As opposed to anything over that amount, it has to go to the board for two readings. Uh, asking for anything under fifteen is actually putting more burden on.
For signing contracts?
Yes. Because the threshold has always been, uh, under fifteen doesn't need to go to the board. That's actually upping the requirement.
Those are very numerous, is that what you're saying?
They aren't. They actually are. But, but compared to the big ones, yeah, there are a lot more of the little ones than they are the big ones.
I mean, where, where those contracts come to us is in the warrants.
Yeah, and that's where you can see them.
We, we do see every vendor for everything. And the, the board has rigorously and regularly questioned anything that we didn't understand. So, I think we have a sort of a feedback loop built in for the low ones. The, the issue on the, the bigger ticket items is those are the ones that are most likely that the public would wanna weigh in on. So, you know, we've, we've set up this system to make sure that, you know, a contract can't, you know, come through and have the public not know about it.
Just one, I don't, I guess, and this is like weeds, I'm sure. I think that, um, just at some point, not necessarily at this moment, I think for me as it relates, just specifically the contract point, is, um, knowing what our process is for payment of, um, vendors, just, just as an example. I'm not gonna go into the details of why I'm asking that. But I think we do pay people without a contract sometimes. And I think we need to just be, um, very clear about what our process is. And so, um, and, and if we, if we have like one, one location, um, where all contracts of all side, you know, whatever, the various amounts are stored, if I know that that's the process, because I'm familiar with it in a corporate environment, that you have repository for all that information, um, information and executing contracts, I'm good with that. But it's just not, when it's not connected to the warrants, um, I can't imagine, I, I don't, you know, it's the same thing. I would assume that the warrants say there's a contract.
Assuming there's a contract behind each one.
Exactly. But we don't know that, you know, should we have an asterisk if there's not?
So, that's, that might wanna policy, you might wanna put a policy in just to say, we won't.
Well, how do we?
You can't authorize to write a check unless there's a contract.
Well, we don't know if there's a contract or not.
But then somebody gets fired.
Well, there, there are ha, there are occasions when services or goods are purchased without a purchase order, which is a contract. Or somebody, uh, has somebody do some work without it going through the process. And generally, those are small and far and few between. We also have contracts where the district gets money from like Alameda County Department of Health Services, where we sign a contract and they provide us with funds to, uh, provide social services to our students and the like. So, we do try to keep one spot where we collect all those contracts. But there has been occasion where people have been asked to do work and there has not been a contract put in place or a purchase order.
But I agree, I, there needs to be a contract, particularly if there's a dis. With the person who says, well, wait a minute, you promised me, and in California, John, you're the attorney here. I understand that a verbal commitment is a contract, right?
That's it for.
Less than a year. So, it's gotta be something.
There has to be a board policy. So, how do we ensure from a board perspective that all services, you know, and are contract, have a contract or, you know, contractual?
There have been cases in other districts where I have sent letters out to the vendors or whoever to say, the person who you had an agreement with was not authorized by the school district or the school board to enter into any contract. I am sorry for, for this inconvenience, but you will have to seek recourse from the person that you, uh, dealt with, and this is not a responsibility of the school district. I've done that before because the district employee has not been authorized by the school board. Because we go through a process, uh, December, where you authorize the superintendent, myself, and Ankara to, to enter into contracts. So.
So, the, the other folks that might be entering the contracts would be principals. Or administrators. Yeah, I mean, and, and so, is it understood by them that they are not allowed? To, to, to enter into a contract without?
They know what the process is.
Ankara or the superintendent or?
The good thing is this has not been a significant problem for us. However, I think, I think we need to be prophylactic with it and, you know, that's what the, especially with going into new, let's put the policy in place.
Well, we're gonna have a principal.
We're talking about the governance handbook. So, so.
Some way to have a similar.
I, I, I think, I think if there's a way the staff can come back with an amendment to our policies to be specific about it and that, that it's not allowed, and then it's, then it's up to staff to, to enforce it. And to communicate that out to all staff so that there's no, um, and, and there also needs to be some way to be clear if there's any financial threshold. I mean, twenty-five bucks is probably okay, but, you know, so we wanna have, have, we don't wanna set it up so someone can't buy an ice cream cone without a.
Yeah, no.
Contract.
And, you know, frankly, that's not, you know, that's definitely not the goal. But it's just, it's a very, it's very much that, put it on the table. We have it, we have had it, we have it. You need to just be very clear about how to.
The business, the business office can develop a set of procedures within our, within the district that isn't at the governance level, but at the.
And that's why I wanna know.
But I wouldn't be surprised if the board policy manual doesn't have a, a policy already that addresses contracts.
I, I think, I'm quite certain it does.
You're not sure a CSBA, that's.
But I think going back to, I mean, I think what, what I'm hearing is a policy will come back. I'm sorry, John.
Well, it was just, yes, to direct staff to see if there is a policy.
Right.
And if there's not, or if it needs to be further clarified that, you know, principals can't do this, but they can do that. Or if they wanna do this, they have to get approval from.
Yeah. So, I think, it sounds like as an informational item at a maybe board meeting in April, we wanted to look to see that we have an adopted board policy related to contracts. And if the policy in itself is not specific enough, then I think what Mark is suggesting would be then a follow-up. And that is, it's, you know, it's common practice for districts to have operating procedures, standard operating procedures that really get more into the specifics of how the policy is implemented. So, I think the first step to see whether we have a board policy that's been adopted by the board. And then if the policy in itself doesn't address the issues that you're concerned about, then that's something that staff can tend to take a look at in terms of developing a.
Johnny was saying that that would be an administrative reg under.
Basically.
Cause the way we have our policies set up, we have a board policy and an administrative reg. And they all get uploaded onto, uh, gamut online so that the public can see it.
Transparent is all.
So, that we're fully transparent. So, I think, I think, I mean, I think this is sort of what we do in our annual governance review is to look at these things. So, I think that's a great policy. But I wanted to go back to your question about the two. Cause this does, I think this is a great discussion. It doesn't get to.
It's a piece, it's a piece of the, the two-time thing. Cause this is where.
But I think, if this, if this gets, I think to, to address board concerns, if, if this gets, um, reviewed and, and re, re, re-edited with the new board members and all, um, what I'm hearing is that there are certain things that are sort of standard, non-controversial, um, you know, like the seat, what we used to call it, I don't know if they still call it the seat beds. There are some of these things that come to us regularly. There's never been controversy about them. It's never been a question. But it's a pain in the neck for staff to have to bring them on twice. There's other things like contracts, where if we're doing something that's not repetitive, which is one time, then the public, you know, I, I, I think it really has to come back twice.
Can I ask you this? You mentioned about the ratification list, fifteen thousand up to eighty-three. But isn't that just for the construction contracts?
No. No, the board agreed to have it be. And can I just say, cause I haven't heard anybody say this, what you're, what you're worried about did not happen, happened in, I think I, less than a handful of times. And it wasn't staff who engaged in this practice. This has really not been a problem. This is a one-time issue. And I think it, yeah.
I think as a matter of procedure, though, I think at least in the three years I was here, the board was always pretty good about, if there was consensus on the board, when I came aboard the first time, there weren't really outstanding issues, then the board was comfortable in taking action. So, when you agendaize items, just because it says action item, of course. So, when you agendaize items, just because it says action item, of course, doesn't mean you have to take action, right? You can always defer the action. And I think the board has been pretty good just in terms of working together that if, you know, if one or two board members still had some issues related to that item, then one option the board always had was to direct staff to kind of further, you know, look at the issue and bring it back to the board a second time. So, I mean, I don't know that you want to codify any kind of thing that says, well, certain items always come back twice, because then your board agenda, you know, when you have to carry items over just routinely, your board agenda is just starting to get...
It's painful. And just as one of the persons helping to get an agenda in front of us, and I do very little, very, very little, but I think you just need to be cognizant of what we're asking for and how important it is to do the pre-work ahead of the meeting, which is your reading, asking questions, trying to get that information so that you have a, a valuable exchange in front of the camera right there at the time, as much as you can. But that's why it's really important to really be thoughtful about having things come over and over and over again, it's gonna happen, some things should, but it's just when you do it with, in such a routine that you're not, we're not really getting anything done, then I've actually seen your face a couple of times, and I'm like, yeah, I know. So, you know, I mean, that's that kind of, you know...
And one of, one of the things I really appreciate, the way you just framed that, John, because it helped clarify what my frustration is watching the board meetings sometimes. The conversation we just had a little while ago, overall the thrust and all of that, the issue of extra work for staff, when some of these routine things that really don't need further discussion, that are no brainers, still have to come back, that's, the staff has to come back again, too. So, I, I'll give you an example of sometime in the last couple of months, when Ryan Cho brought all those donations of computers, there was really no objection from anybody, and yet there was an insistence, no, well, we really have to bring it back, and, and he wanted some numbers, that those numbers could have been supposed to apply after the fact, and just get on with it. I remember sitting there saying, just get on with it.
It was actually on Wednesday's agenda, yeah.
And actually...
It hasn't been approved yet.
As the board thinks about, as you're in the process of looking to hire a new superintendent, one of the things that would be important in establishing the communications between the superintendent of the board is that the Friday memo, in whatever form it takes, often is a vehicle for superintendents to answer individual board member questions regarding upcoming, you know, so, I mean, ideally, you wouldn't want to know in advance what items may be on the agenda, and if any boardrooms have questions, you should be calling the superintendents, they have a question about this. If it's something that is not a confidential matter like personnel matters and things like that, then it could be addressed in the next Friday memo so that those kinds of routine questions can be responded to, then of course, all the boardrooms have the benefit of hearing what the response is, and that really in some ways is intended to save time at the board meeting as well, so that, you know, if you have twenty questions, not all the twenty questions have to be asked at the board meeting, the information can be, you know, individual rooms have questions they can ask.
Well, unfortunately, the board gag goes out that Friday before the Wednesday meeting, so, it wouldn't...
But ideally, it would be nice, so, you have a meeting next Wednesday, but ideally, the memo you got yesterday should have tentative items that will be on the first regular meeting in April, so that the board has kind of advanced organizer, knowing what the staff is planning to bring back to the board, not at the next board meeting, but, you know, the subsequent one.
So, I, so I guess what I'm hearing is that, based on your question on two readings, is that if something comes to the board that's routine and routine, and the board as a collective body can, you know, can, can live with, you know, the one reading and the one approval, we go ahead and do it. But if, and then on the other hand, there are some things that just needs to be kind of, you know, that needs to come back for two readings. So, I, I guess as far as your question, it's really on the total board to say, you know, we're, we're fine with this for, you know, with one reading.
You can throw a thumb up, and I'll be happy. The problem is that I know we've gotten to a place where we're done with it, like bringing it back the next time is not going to change anything, and we, we'll bring it back the next time.
And, or things that are routine.
Yeah.
Now, there are some things, now Carol, I'm gonna say this, based on those donations that came through, there should be a resolution. I mean, I think that's, that's an echo that the donated items need to have a resolution behind it. So, I mean, we have to do things in the proper way.
But, and just to not hit that one so high, I, I'm not saying how, I, you know, I'm just saying, as an example of one, I think, just to, you know, just in general, having a, having the right leadership in the district will also help in informing staff even when, because I think, you know, we just gotta be thoughtful about the time we're in and just think about it.
Right, no, I, I, I hear you.
And I think about it a lot, I'm happy I can sleep now, so, I mean, these are wonderful times for us in so many ways, not so wonderful, but they are better. And I think for, from staff in who's trying to get our meetings, just our meetings, this is just us, you know, a couple of hours, right? But just trying to be thoughtful about what we're asking them to do in addition to, so, that's the only reason I made sure we brought it up, just wanted to make the connection with everybody and see where, you know, any heartburn about it. But I know some things we definitely, you know, I'm not gonna be able to do it, if we're gonna have questions, there's gonna be follow-up, but from John's point, I think that's the...
The, the typical issue of anything, staff, when they're putting agenda items on the board, you gotta kind of rely on staff determining whether staff believes this is of the magnitude that requires two readings. For example, if there's a board policy that may be somewhat controversial, or we know that there's high interest in the community, we would typically bring it back for two readings, you know, first reading, second reading. If we, if, if, but on other items, if staff makes a judgment we're gonna put on as an action item, that never precludes the board from postponing action on them, so you always have the option to ask staff to bring it back a second time, so...
So, I'm trying to translate what you just said into a proposed practice, talking about a policy or a practice, because right now, apparently, we have a practice.
We have a practice.
A two reading.
Right.
So, your proposed practice would be to let staff determine whether it's two readings or one reading, and, and the board can, can make it to if they feel, you know, this, this one reading thing.
Well, if staff feels it takes two readings, staff probably has a good reason to suggest to the board that it needs two readings. So, if the item says for first and for review only, you know, is it an information item or a discussion item? I mean, I don't know, like, you've changed your agenda a little bit, but, I mean, when I was here, we did have identified items as an information item, discussion item, or action item.
Although, if I can jump in, I always give you the option of voting the first time, so I don't make that determination, I leave that completely open to the board, you can always vote on it the first time.
If it, if it's identified as an action item, but it does have to be identified in agenda as an action item, because the public has the right to know whether the board may be taking action on that.
But, but this is the other thing, I don't want staff to take advantage of this and come to us at the last hour to approve something that became to us...
It's fucked against us.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, I don't want that practice neither.
Well, we've been pretty good about not doing that.
Well, I'm just saying, you know...
And you can always say, you know, we really think this needs further review.
Really need to do this.
Right, 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 right. The most common thing is when you're trying to make a deadline to submit an application for a grant, and if the grant requires that the government board take action before the grant's submitted, which some grants require, not all grants require that because of the time, timing of it, sometimes the board approves the grant after it's submitted because the timing just didn't work. And then occasionally, if it's a really important grant and of the magnitude that may require a special meeting, I mean, in my experience, sometimes we had seven-thirty special board meetings because the board had to approve something, it was kind of a routine kind of thing, and all we needed was a quorum of opposed to come in, but, but as a condition of submitting something, there was a requirement that the government board adopted a resolution or approved it, so you can't always make it fit the every-two-weeks schedule.
But Gammet is very sensitive to that issue, you know. We, we try to really be ahead of, you know, we go over, you know, two weeks ahead in Monday Gammet, so those issues can be worked out.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I mean, we've seen things come to us that, you know, there's a statutory deadline, and we kind of either missed it, or it's gotta be done tonight, we've seen things come that, you know, most recently, I mean, you know, we got caught in between a bit on the Common Core implementation plan, and we knew in the fall we wanted to buy these Chromebooks, we hadn't actually effectuated that, and then it was like, the request will be approved the Common Core implementation plan that night so we can buy the Chromebooks, and it was like, wait, we can't, because that's earlier, we need two readings on this, so, I know you guys are, but, but, yes, please be sensitive to that, because we don't want to be caught in the bind where we feel like we have to do something.
And, you know, this, I think this would be a big, a brief conversation you have with the new superintendent, in terms of board superintendent communications and relationships and...
Retreats, retreats.
Okay.
So, so are we clear about what we're going, do you feel like it needs to be documented in our, what's it called, standard operating procedure? Okay, yeah.
Oh, the handbook.
Is the handbook...
I don't think John is, I don't think John is completely clear about any of those things.
Well, I mean, I, from John to Lianna's point in terms of things being listed, and there's always the option to bring back, but if everyone is five, you know, five uncomfortable about the topic that's being covered, and there's no more, it can't go anywhere else, we have to prove that time.
You probably only need a paragraph in a section or somewhere that says, the board shall have every opportunity to ensure that they have sufficient information regarding agenda items prior to the board taking action on them.
Works for me, how about that?
So, it's kind of both direction to staff and, and with the board understanding that...
But in order to not get confusing in terms of what our policies are, you might want to just take this whole thing and have it plugged into as an administrative reg in your Gammet Online, and then it's public and it's integrated in, and there's a small cost to have the CSBA take a look at it.
Yes, this is from CSBA.
Right, so, any changes we do, just take a look, there's also a fee for them to look every year and tell us what state laws have changed.
No, well, it's, it's, we, it's part of our...
Oh, we do that now?
Yeah, it's not, it's part of the service that we buy every year.
Okay, because I haven't seen the annual changes in regulations due to changes in state laws coming to us.
Well, that was our policy.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a bit of work that, you know, what we've been doing is bringing to the board what, that's a bandwidth thing, really, gosh, we've been bringing to the board some of the more, you know, brilliant ones, but that would be...
That's a lot of work.
Wow, a lot of work.
The courtly packets.
Yeah, like that, you know.
Oh, good lord.
And, you know, some of...
And sometimes they're just like a change in a word or two.
And, and so, yeah, and so we're bringing the more, you know, serious, the, you know, the big ones.
Okay, good, that's good.
Yeah.
So, the only, so the recommendation would be to add a couple of sentences in this document right now?
Yeah, that ensures the board has sufficient time to review agenda items before taking action on it, or something that will, will work out the way.
Thank you for that. I care about everyone, so I'm looking at everybody.
I certainly agree with that sentiment. It seems that, that you're asking for more than that going in articulation, should we have a default of a one-time, of a, of a one reading?
I think we just have to be thoughtful every time we ask for two, that's really what I'm asking. I mean, when we know it's done, because I, I'm just sat, you know, I'm chairing a meeting, and I see it's been beat to death tonight, and then here we are, like, we're gonna bring it back. I mean, and we use that even as an excuse to go, to, you know, go closer to with the topic sometimes, so, I mean, it's kind of like, we need to really think about what we can do ahead of, during, and as a follow-up request maybe instead of waiting. So, I mean, it's just those kind of things, just how we kind of process things, and truthfully, a lot of things happen because of the situation, the conditions at the time, you know, of the district, you know, I mean, that happens. So, depends on the leadership, the, you know, financial situation, I mean, there are gonna be changes, but just, you know, thinking about it, just trying to raise awareness about it, to how it impacts.
Staff takes a lot of time trying to anticipate the board's questions and where, how they might perceive the item and understand it, and to do a write-up that will address issues that, and sometimes issues will come up that we couldn't anticipate, and that's when we go back to the drawing board and bring it back.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with, you know, staff taking first crack at trying to figure out if it's a two reading or a one reading, and, and, you know, the board can say, well, we want a second reading of that. I think rarely do we go, oh, no, 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 we want to do this in one. That's happened sometimes in our agency.
But you know, what actually happens, well, I mean, even when we meet about the agenda, so, when those meetings are happening, because I know that ain't gonna get passed, I mean, I know that, so, I mean, I think that's where we can use that, that, that pre-meeting or the agenda meeting to do that as well, so, have another opportunity.
And I do agree with Josh's formulation that when it is a new contract, and even frankly, when it's a repeat contract for MOU about interns with Mills or whatever it might be that we've been doing for five years, those can get out of date.
Well, those are done differently, though, too, that example, but I get...
Yeah, I mean, there are repeat stuff that, I mean, I, I think generally contracts for big amounts of money, the default for me would be to...
No, I think, just to raise it, I think that makes it flexible, or at least gives us the opportunity, the window, did you have something there?
No, it's fine. I was just saying, we don't ever do it in one because we always default to two.
Right.
There are times when I'm like, passing, it, it's so clear, we're always like, oh, well, gotta read it a second time.
Yes.
So, I think we would pass things on first reading if we didn't default to our practice, so...
But my, my experience is when we default the second time, it is a...
I think...
It's, it doesn't, you should come back as an action item, come back as a...
I think it's a little bit, yeah, depending on the complexity of something.
If there's, if there's input and, you know, because oftentimes, not oftentimes, but sometimes there will be input on changes or do that or add that, and then that, yeah, I don't, like, I don't think we're ready to prove it, but we've seen those changes.
No, those makes sense, those totally makes sense, but there have been ones where the topic is done, and the topic is really done even on the next agenda action item, and it's still there, and, and actually, nobody remembers why it's even there again. I mean, that's, I've seen it, that's why I'm saying, that's the only reason I raise it, because...
So, if we're all good with it, yeah, I'm good with doing one.
Just being okay to say, let's go with one, is really...
I'm good with, and we've done that, you know.
Yeah.
But that's why I said, I'm, that's where I started, it's like, I'm fine with doing it in one, loosening the urgency standard, like, I don't think it needs to be urgent if we're good.
Yeah, you do, you know, that's...
Let's do it.
So, that's what we're going, that's the plan, got it?
Okay. What's, what do you want us to do with this document, though? Does it become codified in some kind of board policy, as Josh suggested, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'm, I'm here, that, some of those things in there refer to existing board policies, so, I think one thing is, we probably need to check, make sure that everything in that handbook is consistent with an existing board policy, so I think it's reviewing what's in that handbook to make sure it's not, it doesn't contradict the policy, and then we can find a place to append that handbook or reference it in the board policies to the extent that it's consistent.
Please put it on the website.
Under that board page?
Well, we might want to check the link also to Gammet Online, I've been trying to bring it up, my iPad, it won't come up.
Really? Yeah, maybe, I usually get, I usually get a notification.
They'll want to check some of this stuff.
The internet, or...
Is it internet or just Gammet?
Gammet, I can get onto the, the MRA website, but the school CSBA Gammet is not coming up.
Huh, yeah, I had, we see no notifications from that. Huh, yeah, I had, we see no notifications from them, so they might be having an issue.
Okay, well, that's it for that topic. Any other questions on that particular one? Because we do have a closed session we need to get into. Anything else? All righty, well, I'll bring this, um, okay, I'll bring this meeting to a close, the open session to a close and we'll move into.